Quiet in the courtroom. Do we have to all rise? Good morning. We'll call the January 21st, 2014 County Commission Meeting to Order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and the pledge led by County Treasurer Janet Seeler.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregaled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. Holly Hennes.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-carterificial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today, the consent agenda contains the following items: Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of January 7th, 2014; Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $1,802,432.85; To acknowledge a minor school boundary change and set the effective date as submitted by the Auditor's Office; Approval of a request for authorization to reapply for the VOCA and the STOP-VALE grants as submitted by the State's Attorney and Victims Assistance Departments; Approval of the first quarter state and local agreement as submitted by Emergency Management Department; Approval of the U.S. Geological Survey Joint Funding Agreement, number 14 EMSD 0012, as submitted by Emergency Management; To recognize the volunteers for the month of December 2013, as submitted by Human Resources; And finally, to appoint the following individual to the 2014 Extension Advisory Board: Mr. Matt Ogden.
Does anyone wish any changes? Or any items removed from the consent agenda? Just make-
I'd make a motion to approve items 5 through 12 on the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would just note that the spelling of Matt Ogden's name, it should be two D's instead of DG. And I've noted that with our recorder. Any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is item 13, and we'll proceed with turning the podium over to Circuit Judge, Presiding Judge Jeff Davis. And we have some logistics to deal with. I'm going to ask the Commissioners to line up over there, and as Holly calls the names of the employees that are being recognized, if you would, please come around, and we would all like to shake your hands in gratitude. So Commissioner, Judge Davis, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks to the Commissioners for agreeing to come up and hold your meeting. This is the inaugural event in the courtroom. We've had a couple of swearing-ins to try out the sound system. But this is the first official function, but it was only fitting to recognize the crew that made it happen. Today's about Fort Moutou, but it's not just about Fort Moutou. It's kind of recognition for county buildings and grounds that we all interact with on a day-to-day basis, and to say thank you for everything that you do for all of us.
Commissioners, if you would line up over here, please.
I apologize, these are in no particular order. First, Ms. Alice Walker.
Other than working straight in the upper chief's manhood?
Danny Berg? Rita Bender? Kent Ball?
I guess part of the explanation is that the whole department gets certificates. Some of the night crew obviously works late, and are here this morning, so we'll get them there by the time.
Donald Banks? Scott Anderson? Irene Anders? Dale Anders? Russell Heiple? Jason Enders? Dave Eccleston? Gene Drewitz? Jason, or, excuse me, James Bond? Roger Jagum? James Bowen Tanner? Ross Niemann? Mr. Mike Peterson? Kenneth Pomplun? Robert Reel? Mr. John Roberts? Bruce Selman? Tyler Tibbetts? Emmett Blain? Scott Wire? Aaron Knudsen? Mark Jorgensen? Dwayne Kroger? Mr. Mike Cool? Marie Laircamp? And Mr. John Danny?
With your indulgence, I'll roll a little history lesson. As most of you know, the cornerstone was laid in 1922 for this building. It's interesting to go back, and if you follow down the wall a little bit, the back two pictures are of the first Pennington County Courthouse in what is now the bottom of Sheridan Lake. It was the top of Sheridan, that was the county seat. And about 1877, they started having meetings because the population in the hills around that central area was declining, and thought they'd move it someplace else. That took until 1881, when the final vote was 214 and 179 against, and they started to talk about construction of courthouses around the city, which was by then a payee and supplier to all of the hills. So they moved to town, led a contract, rented some offices just in second-story buildings on Main Street, and started construction of two courthouses in the middle, which were constructed down on the far southeast corner of the county complex now, just about where the Evans Building sits, and then back this way a little bit. The one on the left burned just as it was about completed, and they backed up and started in and constructed the second one. After about six years, it also burned, and they go back out in town, rent some spaces. The one that's most prominent to all of us is the old National College Building on the corner of Pennington St. Joe. After it said National College, they took over the couple of tall walls, moved the sheriff someplace else, and the county operated out of that for a good long period of time. Then discussions started to this courthouse, and the top picture to my left is the actual lane of the cornerstone in 1922. The original blue fence still exists, and in fact, these guys relied on some of that. It just got put back together. The last picture, of course, is just the view from St. Joe to the east, which shows the courthouse, the annet, and the jail. By August of 2014, we'll need to expand that and show and recognize all the efforts that the county Commissioners have put into providing absolutely administrative places for the county, and by then, the courthouse will be full of the horses. All the studies indicate that that needed to happen, and the Commissioners, this board and the previous board, deserve a whole lot of thanks for putting the county's best interests at heart and working things forward. Just a quick little bit of history here, but I think this is just phenomenal. The courthouse originally had one courtroom that went from north to south, and there were five of these bays through it, and all the denture work was on the park and in what is now the next courtroom. Things go along, go along. There were originally skylights of these windows. They leaked at some point in time, and I don't think you ever figured it out for sure, Mike, did you? When those became non-functional, and these were back to just be the window panes. Everything you see above the columns was original, and was here when they built the courthouse. When they did the remodel back in the late 60s, early 70s, when everyone seemed to lose respect for the older buildings, the crew came in, put in the suspended ceiling at about this height, and the corbels, those that were hanging down within the courtroom, if they were going to put an eyelid in to hang their suspended ceiling wire attached to the grid, they just took a hammer and broke it out. Instead of even using open space, they put that up and then run the wire down. As we worked on this project over the year, we kind of got to laughing, but we figured part of the construction crew was somebody who worked at least at the jail who was really angry with the horses, because he did a whole lot of damage. There are pictures on the hallway wall that kind of show the construction as it was born. So, four years ago, the county did an historical study, and Commissioner Troutman kind of led that. Some of us have remembered this was here. I remembered this courtroom when I was just a little kid. And as we did that study, some of the ceiling had got open, and this thing worked around, this was the oldest courtroom, and the last one was in a refurbishment. The carpet had started to wear, it just needed some update. So unbeknownst at the time, Mike came and said, "I've got money to do one courtroom, which one is?" So it's going to be mine, obviously, because it needs it. So, as they took the ceiling grid down, they replaced the ceiling tiles and the lighting, this became apparent. It's to Mike Peterson and Mike Cool's credit that they recognized what was here, and approached me and said, "What would you think if we just opened up the middle bay to kind of pay respect to that old part of the building?" "Well, that's fine for me." By the time it got that open, I started pressuring them, saying, "This is so cool, we got to be open too." So the project evolved and took from about the first part of '13 until just very end of the year. Not that they're slow, but the sheriff had probably had to form, help the Human Services that project form. Everybody in the building, of course, makes demands on them every day. So, we agreed that this would be a work in progress, and as they had time, they worked through it. And it just continued to evolve. You couldn't find replacements for those corbels. So Kent and Ross had some of the upper structure they were responsible for. Kent makes a mold, and the one I know for sure is the fourth one in on this row did a replica. They took the mold, recast these, and put it up. So then everybody kind of works through the paint scheme, and who's going to do what, and how it comes out. I just laughed at the Commissioners, the- Right here, Mike. You want the- Come down here. No. So the Tanish colors- Mike? Come do it.
That's a cold order.
I thought you still had one. I moved the chair a little bit. I could use a little help here. So the Tanish colors are original. Samples were taken, and the original colors were matched. The green, I refer to it as the emphasis pea-soup green. It just wasn't going to work. I couldn't sit there all day and look at it. So there was a lot of thought and effort that went into trying to strike the right colors and yet honor what had been here before. For HVAC purposes, these sofas you see alongside, they knocked holes in the original wall that we just couldn't repair, and we couldn't change the air conditioning and heating. So those sofas were designed to cover those openings and still function for HVAC purposes. Air goes in and out behind them. Then it became obvious that that one, we needed a movie screen. So as you folks get on in the meeting, that'll over, and you'll have your plan and zoning presentation. There's just a whole lot of time and effort that went into working through this. Mike, run it through.
Well, this is the corbel stone he was talking about. Kent went online, did a lot of research and development on how to come up with a pattern that we can rebuild. What was it, 20 of them? That were just completely destroyed, gone, missing. They're pretty lightweight. Some of the dentil work you see up there was also repaired. Some of the stuff here above the bench was completely delved and strapped. Some more trial and error, research and development, as you want to call it.
They'd make free recruits to whatever lumberyard you wanted, and this is just an amalgamation of different groups that you can buy to put in your place, and Ross kept with it until we got that.
Just some of the simple stuff, even some of the molding that were just busted out completely. Kent went to a lot of trouble to build small frames and fix six, eight inches of the tannin, reporn, sand, getting it back. You can't tell what damaged that one. It was quite a project. It looks really expensive in the ceiling, but it's marble. Just a peeling, like a diamond desk. It was a cheap fix, and we looked all over for glass or some kind of plastic to put back up in there, but nothing fit. The old hole, would have been too many seams. Couple of things that we really fought with was we had to completely 100% sprinkle the area. We had to 100% smoke cover the area to bring it up to coat. There's a lot of technology in it, and we brought back as much of the history as we could without damaging anything else. Got a great group of people working forming. I couldn't be happier.
So the efforts, that's the short version. We had original lights, we had access to the original lights in Janet's office, and it was about $9,000 a glow, to replicate those. So that wasn't going to happen. In the back of the bay, where you see the curve and all the scrollwork, about every 18 inches, there are theater-style marquee lights through there. And Emmett and his crew just couldn't leave electricity alone, but it wasn't going to work to put the bulbs back in. So there's roflading up there. I laughed and said, "If I ever score a day in here, that'll be perfect." But the audience is just, I mean, it's amazing. And rather than turn all the lights down now, just as we conclude this portion of it, I'll just pick them off for a second, so you can see the time and effort that went into it. These are about LED, energy-efficient, that they researched. They're dimmable, you can take them down to 25%, turn them on and off in sequence, whatever we need. If there's a video presentation taking place, you can balance it so the audience is just protected, but yet get the right shading so you can see what's taking place. The plot got researched, that's brand new. They go over to the shop, paint the frame to match the door frames, and the face was still pretty shiny, so that has a clear matte look to it, so it looks old and doesn't reflect back. I think one of the things that struck me was that as we worked through the project, Mike said we need a seal of some sort. And I looked at the state seal, and it's kind of complicated. And I wasn't sure that the state seal in this courtroom was what I wanted anyway. So I went to the Unified Judicial System seal. This got awful. I told the chief justice, "You need to read the end ad, it's just a couple letters and a circle." And kept thinking "seal," and it dawned on me that every day in the clerk's office, in the old days at least, you used an old hand stamper, and there's still some of them around. So I made a couple impressions of that hand stamper, take it over to Buildings and Grounds and leave it, and what they come up with is what's hanging on the wall behind the bench. It's a one-off. I'm not sure I could get them to build any others, just because of the time and effort. But I mean, it's just the dedication that they put into this, and I think the significance shows as we work through it. We're pretty insistent around the county, because Buildings and Grounds works hand-in-hand, and everybody had a part in this. The day crew, the night crew, who came up afterwards, make sure we weren't tracking anything around. And everyone had a particular talent, but I think it's fair to kind of recognize some of the specialties. Mike Peterson is Buildings and Grounds Director. Need I say anymore? We all know his talent. Mike Cool is Construction Project Manager. Jim Holm-Tanner can't be here today, but as foreman, he helped coordinate all this. And we'd be in the courtroom, and somebody would say, "Well, that's not quite the right color of paint." Off Jim'd go to see what he could do for it. John Danny keeps all the computers running. Roger paid all the bills. Some signs thought I was going to have to offer him a little spiff on the side just to get him to go on through with it, but everything seemed to work out. Then, for the framework and everything that went on up above, Russ, and Tyler, and Bruce worked through that. Tyler, the middle portion of those windows is actually sheen lock, painted to get that effect. It was trial and error, but that's just talent that was in the department. Emmett Blain and Jason Enders are the electrical guys and are responsible for all this and making sure it works. Dave, and Kent, and Bob did all the HVAC, and that was a challenge. What had originally happened when they did this reconstruction, this being here, this would be the same height as that. And when they brought all the HVAC across, they just hacked it up, so they'd have holes in it this high, getting up into the main structure. So that all got reconstructed and built down, because this part of the ceiling had to stay where it is. All the ductwork is up there. So then we're standing around, and Mike comes up with this cloud idea to kind of accentuate the bench, because the bench looked kind of strange, just poked out there. And after a lot of trial and error, that's what we see. So it's just an amazing project. I'm really proud of the way it turned out, and tickled the guys that made it work. We'll give you a little demonstration of the lights here.
Thank you. Commissioner Troutman, do you have some part of this history?
I would just like to say that there was a real good commitment, and I want to thank Judge Davis for being a part of it, but there was a really great commitment on the part of Buildings and Grounds and several others in our community who are not actually part of the county family. And when we did that research, the importance of this building to the community and its historic value is pretty special. And it was disheartening when we saw some of the damage that had been done. But to see what Buildings and Grounds did with this room to replicate much of the era and much of what was here, and what they did to save what they could, I am so appreciative. I can't even tell you what those words are, but you did a wonderful job, and thank you, thank you very much.
Let's give them one more hand. Let's give him one more hand. Thank you, Judge Davis.
Okay, thank you. We've got to get back to work.
It just feels so awesome.
It's a little high, but it's okay. Hopefully don't have to type that much.
Next on the agenda is item 14A.
Good morning. KJ Peterson, Chief Deputy Auditor. We have a public hearing today for the renewal of the liquor retail on sale with Sunday Sales liquor license for the Big Horn Crossing.
Any comments from the commission?
Make a motion to approve the liquor license.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the issuance of the license. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item 15A, Buildings and Grounds PC Campus Expansion Project Update. Mike?
Good morning. Mike Cool, Construction Project Manager, Buildings and Grounds. Have a handout if that's all right for the commissioners? I have a couple of things for you today, but I wanted to give the commission an update on the campus expansion project. It continues to proceed very well. We're, we continue to be happy with our working relationship with Skull Construction. The project remains under budget, but we have experienced some weather delays, something that we'll be addressing with the second item I have for you today, adding some, some dates to the schedule. Currently, the, if you have seen the building, the exterior precast and brick is essentially done now on the exterior of the building. The work is primarily focused at this time, right on the, just on the administration building. Of course, there's the site work that will start up again when the weather warms up. Window installation is underway. The roofs are complete on the different sections of the building. Installation of mechanical electrical systems continues and they're probably about a third of the way finished with sheet rocking building. So things are progressing well over there. As I noted, the, the project did experience some weather delays. We do have some weather days built into the project, but those were exceeded. And currently, well, we're adding 13 days to the schedule, so our completion date is now August 23rd of this year. The document that I gave you is a kind of a rundown, breaks down the projects by the three different bid packages. It also includes the property purchases at the top of it. But if I direct you to the second page, the first yellow line on the second page is, is the current running numbers for the administration building, which has a, currently has a budget of $16.5 million. We have currently spent about $9.3 million, which is about 56% of the budget overall so far. And we have about a balance of $7.1 million. If you go to the second, second yellow line on the, on that same page, the overall budget for the, the project is 29.8 million. Our expenditures to date are 20.9 and we have a balance of 8.7 million of the budget Those are, I guess, were the items I just wanted to highlight. If there are any questions regarding any of the spreadsheet or other questions I can answer for the commission?
Any questions or comments?
Mike, just as a comment, we are having a replicated cornerstone made that we will put on the building, probably the first part of April, sometime in April there. And we're envisioning kind of historic ceremony like they did to put the first one in to kind of keep that continuity between buildings. And so I, when we were talking about putting the cornerstone in this morning, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Mike, go ahead.
All right. My second item is change order number four. We're at a point now where we need to execute another change order for this project. A copy of the change order is attached with a list of items that are included with this change. One of those is the 13 days that I mentioned. But you'll notice that there are kind of a mixture of additional costs and deduct costs as we've moved through the project. We have identified some areas where we could cut cost and as we've, we are figuring out what we need for, for equipment for the building, it also is helping us refine some of the needs in the building that are allowing us to cut some costs, so. Overall, this will increase the contract sum by $17,038.93, bringing the budget or the contract value for with Skull Construction to $22,626,807.75. And it will increase the contract time by 13 days. And as I indicated earlier, the completion date is now scheduled for August 23rd.
Do you have a comment here, Mike, in your communique? The increase in cost will come out of the project's contingency budget.
This, this will be covered, this increase in cost will be covered by the contingency budget. Another thing that I wanted to point out that is the, this is, with this addition, primarily these are focused on the administration building, but we're currently seeing an increase with this change order of $53,749 for the administration building project.
Any other questions from the commission? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize the chair's signature to change order number four dated January 15th, 2014, which increases the contract sum by $17,038.93 to a total of $22,626,807.75 and increases the contract time by 13 days for the Jay Skull Construction Services contract for the construction of the Pennington County Campus Expansion Project.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Item 16, Items from Emergency Management: Special Approval of Vouchers/Expenses.
Good morning, Chairman Peterson, members of the commission. Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. First, I beg your forgiveness, I've been under the weather, weather the last couple of days, so I'll try to muddle through this without misspeaking too many times. But obviously it was important that I be here for this. So if I can give you just a, a brief background on how we got to where we are right now, I can tell you it's much more enjoyable to, to come before the commission and report out on the successes that we've had, rather than come cap in hand and, and answer for decisions that resulted in some type of, of contestation. However, this stemmed obviously from Winter Storm Atlas and we had about 67, 68 hours of actually pushing a little over 70 hours of continual operation in the emergency operation center. In accordance with FEMA and Homeland Security best practices, we did what they call a hot wash as well as an official after action report to try to identify those things that we did well, that we want to continue, as well as things that we could do better, to identify some shortcomings. One of the things that was brought to light in both the hot wash throughout the actual response and then certainly at the official after action report was the fact that while we preach preparedness and we tell everybody to have three day kits and be prepared to be on your own for three days, we were woefully unprepared in the emergency operations center to really support the operations and the number of staff that we had operating in there. And one of those items was, was food. And so after that after action review, right before I left on vacation in, in December, I directed staff to come up with a three day shelf-stable, freezer-stable food plan for 15 staff members for three days. And I also instructed them to get countertop, basic countertop appliances, no, nothing built in or, or special wiring or ducted, just regular countertop appliances so that we could heat up meals for staff working in the EOC. Obviously, the level of paralysis that we, we had during that storm was, was almost unprecedented in our community. And, and I know everybody's familiar with that, so I won't beleaguer that point. But it was an effort and I thought reasonable to address one of the issues that we identified a shortcoming in with our, with our response. Obviously, there's a series of checks and balances within the county and through the auditor's office and some of those charges were, were brought into question. And subsequently, in a discussion with the Emergency Management Users Board, both Sheriff Tom and Commissioner Holloway brought up that it would be a better solution, a more workable solution to rely more heavily on the jail kitchen to provide those meals. And I certainly don't disagree. I think it's important to note that we did use the jail kitchen facilities while we, while we were in our winter, our winter storm atlas response in the EOC. They're the ones that provided us our, our sandwiches. So we did get some support from the, from the jail kitchen and I should have visited more with, with Sheriff Tom and as Commissioner Holloway, or I'm sorry, as Chairman Peterson has admonished in the past, that users board is, is an excellent brain trust and certainly need to rely on them a little more heavily. So that's kind of where we are now after that Emergency Management Users Board meeting, when they said that it would be a better solution to rely on the jail kitchen and I, I completely agree. I instructed staff to then return those items that had been, been brought into question by the auditor's office. So what I'm here before you today to ask, one is to give you the explanation on how we got to where we got right now and then the, the action that I would need or ask the commission to take is listed out on that spreadsheet that I brought you this morning. This is accurate as of this morning. The restocking and freight and return fees for everything that was brought into question totals $946.28. And as, as again, those are charges that are not typically, not, they're charges that require commission approval for the auditor's office to process. So I'd certainly stand for any questions that the commission may have on, on this situation.
Mr. Holloway, do you have any comments from a users board standpoint?
Sure. Just Dustin has already commented that we talked about this at the user board meeting and, and I would just say that Dustin was, was trying to resolve a, a problem that was identified during that, that storm in moving forward with purchasing these items. He's assured the user board that he researched it. He thought that he had the authority to spend those funds out of the pandemic flu budget. So I, you know, Dustin's worked for us for, what, about a year and a half now, two years. He's not as familiar with county government and all of the resources that we have available here as much as some of the other, other of us who have been around for a while. And after some discussion about the utilization of the jail kitchen and being able to provide hot meals to people working in those kinds of situations, you know, he's on board with that. So I think this is as good a solution as we can come up with, returning those items. I mean, it's, you know, one thing about having those and, and keeping them in storage until you have an event, which could be several years down the road, you don't know how they're going to work, you don't know where, what, what condition they're going to be in by the time you get ready to want to use them. Whereas a jail kitchen is going to be used on a daily basis. So it's a much better, a much better solution to that issue. And, and so returning these items, I think was the best scenario. Obviously, there's some expense in doing that, but still it's the best solution. So if there's a motion needed to pay this return fees and shipping costs of $946.28, that would be my motion.
Do we have a second? In terms of discussion, one of the questions I would have is, and I don't know whether Sheriff Tom is the person to answer this or not, but is, is there any kind of formal action or agreement needed to put on record the availability of the jail kitchen?
I'll let Sheriff Tom speak to that. Obviously, there's a lot of, of details that have to be worked out moving forward.
Good morning. Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff. Also with me, Fire Chief Mike Maltever and he's the president or chairman of our user board for emergency management. And I don't think it takes any formal action. What we will do is get with Dustin, look at the needs for the EOC and for a projected number of days, whether it's three days, four days, five days, and just work with our food vendor, which is CVM out of Sioux Falls, and make sure that they're aware of the role we'd like them to play going forward with emergency management and helping provide some of the food. So I don't see it being a problem.
Dustin, I would assume that you're going to write this so into a, some kind of an SOP for, for those kinds of disasters.
Yeah, again, and not to beleaguer you again with, with acronyms, but again, those best practices from Homeland Security and FEMA, that after action report then develops into a, I'm sorry, the words escaped me, but it's a, a improvement plan. So we take that after action report, we look at our deficiencies and then we have a codified improvement plan of how we're going to address all those things that we, that we identified as shortcomings and also have timelines on when those things will be completed. So it is certainly something that, I mean, if, if, if another event, God forbid, happens next week, we're still in the same boat. So we need to, to move forward with, with addressing those. Not to say it's a, it's an easy fix, but the resources are here. It's just a matter of working out an agreement and making sure that we, that we all understand where we're at on that. So it's certainly something I'm going to be working on.
But in the future, three or four or five years from now, when we've forgotten about Storm Atlas, at least there'll be something documented on here's how we're going to handle.
It'll be written into our It'll be written into our Emergency Operations Center plan, Operations Plan, absolutely.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Dustin, I would hope that from here forth, you'd utilize all of the talents that's available to you through the entire Pennington County resources. As you can see with the building and ground people that were here earlier, what they can do when they think about things. And so I understand you made a mistake there, and we're not going to take you to the flogging post for it, or I'm not, anyway. But one other, one little bitty thing here that's kind of bothered me a little bit now, the Emergency Management people wrote some personal checks and gave them to the auditor to pay for some of this stuff that was on this list, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I don't see any place here that the sales tax on those was paid to the state of South Dakota. And that's something that the auditor's going to pick up on from here. So my suggestion would be you get with Julie and somebody down there and take care of that.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Well, let it go, did a good job. I think the sheriff has a great idea using the jail. I thought about that, but that's a good deal. Thanks. Any other comments?
Can I make some, please?
Yes.
Through all of this, Dustin, you did a fantastic job, and we don't want to let that go by the wayside. I want everyone to remember how difficult those days were for you and for many, and you did an amazing job, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Troutman. And again, it was, it's been a learning experience. There have been several poignant lessons that have come out of it. So come out the other side, hopefully a better emergency manager for both the city and the county.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just a clarification on the payment of this. I assume it'll come out of the, just the general fund dollars that you have, it's not necessarily out of the pandemic flu.
Correct, it'll just be out of our general fund, for lack of a better term, our Emergency Management Fund, yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You know, I guess Dustin has sort of said it, and a couple of commissioners, oh, you made a mistake. I'm not sure you did. Are there any rules that say how much he can spend out of his budget and for what? You know, if we're going to condemn some of our department heads, maybe we should have dollar amounts that you can't spend. I know you don't want to spend county money for needless things that aren't proper, but I mean, we do have a set figure, only twenty thousand, something like ten thousand, I don't know.
I would agree with you 100%. He did not make any kind of mistake from the Auditor's Office. The only thing that we question are expenses that are outside the normal, and this was, and we bring them to you often, and you're right, that's our job in the same way Dustin was doing his job, and certainly were no, in no way, shape, or form indicating that an error had been made. We're just simply requesting that approval. In the future, yes, we do have that standardized document in the same fashion that he has his on processing and approval of vouchers, and could revisit it. Sometimes we come in with expenses that are declined, sometimes they're approved, and we bring those to the Board as part of the standard operating procedures of our office.
Perhaps the system worked the way it's supposed to work.
I think it did.
Absolutely.
I see the Mayor of Rapid City here, Pam Quaker, and the city is a partner in this process of emergency management. Do you have any comments you wish to make?
Well, good morning, Commissioners, and Lindell recognized me, so I thought I would come up and say a few words. I think the little bitty thing about this is that it's a little bitty thing, and I am really disappointed that this has become an issue. I think Dustin is one of the best Emergency Management Directors that this county and this city have ever seen, and I'm here to back him up. And, you know, I, this reminds me of the nonsense that I went through a few years ago with people making an issue out of me sending note cards to the Special Olympics team. I think we have, in our budgets, discretion and authority to make wise decisions, and I think he made a wise decision. Quite frankly, I don't see why the appliances are being returned. I don't see a problem with having a refrigerator down in the Emergency Operations Center, and I think when I look at what this gentleman did during the last storm and how he helped lead a community, we had, Iowa's out of town, we had our school superintendent out of town, it was a surprise blizzard, we were all on the phone with this guy. Couple days after the storm, I was in the Commissioner's room with, boardroom with Nancy Troutman and Commission Chairman Lindell Peterson and Dustin, and we had, and Jerry Wright from our council, and we had a serious concern. We called him out of whatever he was doing, and he came in, and we got the Governor's Office on the phone, and the Governor's Office helped us out. This guy is a rising star, he's a leader, and I'm proud of what he's done, and I think that this issue should be resolved quickly, and that we should move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I think Dustin would be the first one to admit that he's smarter than I was.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone else who wishes to comment? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dustin. Next item is item seventeen, items from the Highway Department.
Good morning, Heiny Jungy, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. First item I have is our annual bid authorization. This is authorization to bid for maintenance projects and our annual supplies for 2014. We plan on doing an asphalt mill and overlay project on 161st Street and 160th Avenue. This is from New Underwood South to Highway 44, approximately eight miles. Estimated cost is a million dollars on that. The next project is an asphalt overlay project on Radar Hill Road from Longview Road south to Highway 44, and Morris Lane from Anderson Road to Radar Hill Road, 2.5 miles, estimated at 296,000. AST project is asphalt chip seal or surface treatment, the technical term, on 25.9 miles of various roads in the county, estimated cost 604,000. Our ASC is our asphalt crack seal project on various county roads, estimated at 205,000. And then we're going to do four aggregate stockpiles. Two of them are located over in the New Underwood area, one up in Hill City area on Copper Mountain, and the other one is going to be in the Wall area, estimated 680,000. And then, of course, all our annual supplies are aggregate materials, concrete products, metal, culvert, cutback, and mossite asphalt, sand, et cetera. So we're looking at a motion, authorize the Highway Department to advertise for these items.
Do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to authorize the Highway Department to issue bid, or is what you might say, issue bid.
Advertise for bids for our maintenance projects and annual supplies.
Advertise.
For bids, yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item B.
Next item is to bid for some used equipment. I had this in my 2014 budget and visited with you a little bit when we had our hearings, but we're going to look at trying to purchase a used elevating scraper to replace a 1984 John Deere that we can no longer get parts for. We'd like to purchase a used knuckle boom log loader truck for the Hill City area that will replace a 1984 Mack, and then one new skid steer loader to replace a 1992 Bobcat. All these purchases are provided in our 2014 budget. These will all be separate bid advertisements because each one has different specifications. So we're looking for a motion to advertise for bids for one elevating scraper, one used knuckle boom truck, and one new skid steer loader.
Do we have a motion? So moved, Mr. Chair, as presented. Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Next item is an agreement for our 2014 county striping program. It's an agreement with the state of South Dakota. The State Transportation Commission provides about 500,000 for all 66 counties. They put a limit on it, our limit for Pennington County is approximately 119,000. They will pay 71,000 of that cost, and we're going to be responsible for those remaining. Our total estimated cost to stripe 275.6 miles next year is 305,000. So we're requesting a motion to approve the agreement with the state of South Dakota for the 2014 county striping program, and authorize chairperson's signature. They need that on their document, in the motion anymore.
That's my motion. Paner into the striping program agreement with the county, or with the state.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
And add it on to that is authorize your signature on the contract.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is Hawthorne Ditch update.
Yes, you asked the Highway Department, Planning and Zoning, and Hawthorne Ditch Company, and the city of Rapid City to try and set up a meeting. We had a meeting last Thursday, January 16th. I've kind of done a memo to you highlighting what's been going on in the past, and the question raised was, does the county use the Hawthorne Ditch for our stormwater drainage in the valley? And yes, we do. We have a storm sewer outlet out of Twilight Drive into the ditch, and we also have one at Covington Street and Plateau Lane. So we do use the ditch for stormwater, and if the ditch went away, we'd be in big trouble because we would probably have to, while you, somehow we'd have to maintain flow through that ditch. And then, on December 7th, we used to have a Western Flood Management District that took care of the drainage issues. December 7th of 1999, the Board passed a resolution repealing that ordinance, and I can't remember who made it, but they said Highway can take care of drainage. So we've kind of been doing the drainage since then. In 2000, the Board passed an ordinance where they required a drainage fee for new building permits. That's collected by Planning and Zoning. In 2002, the Highway Department asked to set up a drainage reserve. That went okay until 2008. In 2005, I submitted a project to the state to enclose the Hawthorne Ditch in concrete pipe from Twilight Drive to reservoir. We got approval to fund this project, and then we had some resistance from the citizens out there, and we took a, sent a postcard to everybody that lived along the ditch, and the majority voted no, so the Commissioners just put that project on the shelf, and nothing's been done since '05. Then in '08, the Commissioner dissolved the Drainage Reserve Fund, which had approximately 238,000 in it. And from 2008 through December 13th, there was an additional 231,000 in overcollected and unspent drainage funds that reverted back to the general fund. And I feel we need to get a long-range plan in place. I see, my long-term vision would be to see that drainage ditch in culvert throughout the whole valley. That would allow equipment and whatever we need to drive along that 30-foot wide easement to maintain it, keep the trees down, not to let them grow wild. And part of this could be funded through the 469,000 in drainage fees that have been collected that went back to the general fund. So the meeting we had on Thursday, we had a very good discussion. We talked about a lot of different issues, and the main concern right now is there's a bunch of residents that have thrown their branches and trees in a ditch. When water starts flowing, and if there's a rainstorm, or when they turn a ditch on, we're going to have dams, and we're going to possibly have flooding in residential areas. So something needs to be done, and I believe the county is responsible for part of it because we do use it as a stormwater drain. And we talked about, should the county hire a contractor to go in there and do some work, or should it be the Hawthorne Ditch Company? Time is of the essence, and if we need to do something, it has to be done soon. My thought is, if we're going to hire contractors to go in there, try to get equipment in there, why don't we remove as much brush and trees as we can and start planning to put that irrigation water into a concrete culvert? Because right now, you can't get equipment in there anyway because of all the trees, and we just will start cutting trees and brushing, getting it to the point where we can start planning four or five years out to try and get that ditch put in a, in concrete culvert, so it's better to maintain in the future. If the county tries to do a contract and a bid letting, we have all the bid laws we have to follow, and more hoops to jump through, and my thought was, it might be, it would be a lot faster if somehow we could, the Hawthorne Ditch Company could hire a contractor, and the county would participate in the cost. They're a private company, not-for-profit, but they could go get quotes and get somebody in there right away where we would have to advertise and jump through a bunch of hoops. So with that, if you've got any questions, I'll try and answer them. I think Harold Bees is here from the Hawthorne Ditch Company, and I think they've been trying to get some quotes to get what the cost would be to clean that up. So with that, I guess I'm done, unless you have direct questions, or you want to wait after Harold talks.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What's the Hawthorne Ditch Company think about putting it in a culvert?
I think they'd be all for it. They were all for it in 2005.
Jay, even though the Hawthorne Ditch Company goes out and hires the people, we're still limited to how much money we can pay them. I mean, we can't get around the bid laws by doing it that way, can we?
I think there may be something, what you're saying.
I mean, I, I don't know, if it takes a motion or whatever, but I'm in favor of doing something now and getting it on the drawing board to put it in a concrete pipe sometime down the line.
We, I did have Dwayne Scott, which is a retired engineer, he works part-time for us, he's pulled all the plats, and we are pretty confident, we have a 30, between a 30 and a 40-foot right away, all the way through the valley. There's a couple parcels that they might, the Hawthorne Ditch does not have an easement on, but it looks like we have easement through the whole, through the whole area.
And we'll do this forever. So let's try to end it. It might be most expensive, but in the long run, I think it'll be cheaper to put it in a pipe.
And that was my thought, if the Commissioners decide, yeah, it's going to be an ongoing problem, it's never going to go away, we need it for storm sewer, we can't get away with that, and it wasn't all the county's doing as the developers developed that property and started to do their parcels. I mean, that was where they dumped their stormwater, so. And there's a lot of encroachments in the ditch easement, and the Hawthorne Ditch has the easement in their name, and hopefully we could enter into some kind of agreement that would allow the that would allow the county to utilize that easement for some of our stormwater, which we do have agreements on the different road sections. But if we got an overall easement or agreement with the Hawthorne ditch company to utilize that easement, I think that would allow us to go in there and do a bunch of work. So with that, I'll...
How big of a pipe would it take to carry that water?
Uh, starting at Twilight, we can get by with about a 42-inch. And then we can get to racetrack draw and that racetrack or Jolly Lane. Then we have the Hawthorne ditch underground for about 800 feet. And then it jumps back up into an open ditch. And as we get downstream, when we get down by, past Covington and Twilight, then we're looking at two pipe, two 42 or 60-inch pipe. We had it designed in 2005. As we, as we came through the valley, we had inlets. We actually had inlets for over-the-ground stormwater so they could also dump in the ditch in the spring. So we kind of had it designed to pick up some of the excess stormwater also. So if we want to move forward and put it in pipe, I think we need to go back to brose engineering. They're the ones that designed it originally and have them update the plan. Because I think we had it designed from Plateau Lane or from Sprucewood through Plateau Lane, the reservoir has two pipes. But that brings up an issue when you're, have the irrigation ditch on. How can, is there a way to use one pipe for stormwater and one for irrigation? Because the irrigation needs a certain amount of head to push the water through. And that part of the plan might have to be redesigned and use a box culvert instead of double pipe. So there's some issues we have to work out. But I think the long-range plan is, is we need to do it. And if we start budgeting $400,000, $500,000 a year in about five, six years, we could have that, that project completed.
Do any of you folks from the Hawthorne ditch wish to address the commission? Please. Identify yourselves, please.
Harold Bees of the Hawthorne ditch.
Howard Rice from the Hawthorne ditch.
Yeah. I think the next move we better do is have a meeting. And we need to satisfy what we're going to do right now. We've had several contractors down there verbally. I think we need to meet with the county highway and the city also and get a satisfaction for what we want to do right now. And then do a long-term plan. Right now, I think it's going to have to be kind of an emergency cleanup to get things running.
So do you guys want it in a culvert?
We're not, we are not objecting. We're willing to work with the county.
Culvert would be great. Yeah, nobody's going to throw stuff in there, for one thing.
Well, I think what killed that last time was they wanted to put a bike path.
People didn't want them in their backyard, you're absolutely correct.
In their backyard, hell, I wouldn't want it in my backyard either.
That's kind of... I did get one bid now, and this is not too bad. From Frank's Tree Service, we walked it on Saturday. But only from Jolly Lane upward, almost hits Twilight where it comes across, all the way to Reservoir Road. And, and we did, we walked most of it. Some of it was pretty bad in some places. And other places, it really was nice where the neighbors. But it came to $28,800. Take him, he'd said about eight-man crew, three-plus days. And they'd provide the equipment. We'd have to open the gate at the racetrack to let him in up there and haul everything away.
That's just to clean up the existing trash type. That's not to...
Plus cut some of the other trees, but not some of those that are up the bank. They still might be within the 15-foot easement each side. But sure would make it so we don't have problems. Because we have problems right now. It is going to flood, and it is going to flood somebody else.
One of the, excuse me, Howard. One of the other problems we have here on the ditch is the encroachments just totally garbage. And we had planning and zoning down, looking at some of them problems all the weekend. And they're, they're a problem that we're going to have to address right away, too.
So does your ditch company have any money to put towards this $28,800?
Normally, just to clean the brashes up on a normal year, we have about $4,000 appropriated just for maintenance and operating maintenance and cleaning of the ditch. We do an assessment annually, and we would probably have to do an assessment.
What, what kind of, what are you looking at for the? I mean, you got any figures in mind for what the ditch company would pay? What county would pay and what you'd pay personally, Harold?
No, we have not.
Took a while, but got it, huh?
I don't like to say what I should say right now. We've operated for 100 years this way in good shape. And the city and the county is over encroached on us. I think a large amount of this money, the bigger share of this money is going to be county money myself.
Well, it would seem to me like we need to, you know, and I, I don't know if they need to get another quote or two on the, from somebody, the $28,800. At least that would take us out of the, take us out of the problem for spring runoff, I think. And then try to enter into some kind of an agreement for a long-term project.
Is this personal services? That doesn't need a bid, is what I'm getting at? Professional, yeah. Probably not, huh? It's a stretch.
I'll be getting another bid after this meeting. I'm supposed to meet the guy from Highmark who just did the cyclone.
What about the guy you used, Heine, that gave you a pretty good deal for cleaning up after the storm?
I don't know if he'd be interested. I guess I haven't talked to him. I, I knew if the county gets involved and we're the lead agency, then our bid law, we can go up to $25,000. After that, we got to bid everything. And I was, my thought was, is there any legal way that we could enter into an agreement with the Hawthorne ditch and just give them a check and let them go in? They can hire anybody they want and get the best price they can and go that way. But I don't know. That's attorney questions that have to be answered. Is there any way the county can? We know we have a problem. And can we enter into agreement with the Hawthorne ditch company, a nonprofit company, and help correct the situation with funding? But if not, then it's a bid letting. And I think, and I got to look at the bid laws, but the commissioners probably could declare an emergency. I'd have to talk to Dustin also. But if we have a, if we know that it's going to flood, if we have big spring runoff or a big snow event in the spring, I think the commissioners can declare emergency and go that way. And I haven't talked to Jay about that either.
We're under $25,000. Our, our part of it will be under $25,000 anyway, if it's 28, one way or the other. So I don't see that the bid's a problem.
Problem is, how do you cut the check to Hawthorne ditch?
That may be the problem.
Jay, are you comfortable commenting at this time, or?
Well, we know for sure the county's participation would be under $25,000.
Well, they said that it would be 28 is the bid they have now total. So I assume they're willing to put some money in.
Like 50/50 split.
That's only for a portion of the ditch, too. That wasn't the amount of ditch that we have to do. I think we need to have another meeting right now with Heine, the city, and the county, and bring the attorneys into it. And get our long-range plan just kind of planned, but get the short term to get this thing flowing again.
That's my motion.
Second. Okay, what is your motion?
Just what Harold said. That they, that meet with the city, the county highway, and some attorney, our attorney, their attorney. I don't know if Hawthorne has an attorney or not, but that'd be more than welcome. And work out some kind of agreement for the short term. And take, start planning for the long term. I'm thinking pipe, but, but something on the long-term basis so we don't go through this every year.
Is the second comfortable with that motion?
That's exactly how I heard it.
So with that, is there any further comments or discussion?
So you want us to meet again and this time include the attorneys?
To start getting a contract drawn up and we might as well have them involved right off the bat because they're going to be involved sooner or later.
Okay, so you want us to sit down and start drafting a contract or an agreement?
For the short-term cleanup of the ditch, yeah. I guess that's what I meant.
And working on a long-term.
And working on a long-term one.
You comfortable?
I guess so.
Sort of along the lines that you wrote us.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And I think now that it's pretty much known that we've got a problem there. And we could wind up with a flooding problem. Flood somebody's house and things out now. That's, I think, going to make us very liable in the future. So if we don't do something about it this spring, I think we're playing with fire.
And, and I know I talked to Dwayne Scott, which has been around for many years. And we, we talked about the issues. If we do put the, if we start putting the ditch in, in the concrete pipe, a lot of people that have shallow wells and pump out of there for free are no longer going to be able to do that. So our water table should decrease. But on the other hand, they can't get water. But then the people that have water in their basements and their sump pumps are running all the time and they're pumping it in the streets and all that, that should help that problem quite a bit, too. So there's trade-offs. You're going to lose on one end but gain on the other end, so.
Commissioner.
The, in 2008, when the commissioners dissolved the drainage reserve fund and placed it in general fund, is that in a special reserve under the, in general fund?
No, it got moved into general period. You got rid of the reserve.
So any money that's left over that you don't spend each year out of that drainage fund just goes back into the general?
Just goes back into general, and that's part of your accumulated cash or whatever that terminology is.
Okay, any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item 18. A request for permission to construct a gate across a section line.
I'd like to compliment the county on this fancy courtroom up here since my value tax has been going up for $500 or $600 every year. I think I know where some of it went. I hope it was those cushions on those benches back there. I'm here to see about putting a fence across a trail that leads down.
Identify yourself, please.
Glenn Lockner.
Thank you.
And this is under 31-25-1 that I'm attempting to be allowed to have a temporary gate across a trail that leads into my pasture and dead ends and gravel pit down there. And this has been used with a fence across it since day one. I mean, I, my father had one across it. And I come home and back in '57, and I've used it. And I guess I wasn't aware that if anything done to it, it all of a sudden turns into a public road. And this was used to haul gravel out. And if there was a beat-out spot in the trail or water or something, yeah, they did dribble some pit run gravel, some gravel on the road. It's never been graded up into grade as such. And I just have a problem, I had a problem with water. Always did have a problem with one part of that pasture. And I constructed, found water about a quarter of a mile down the section line in my fields where I could get water so that if cows didn't, if crick didn't run, which you know how cricks are in South Dakota, especially that one. And so I could use that section line to water the cows. I mean, it's a half section that I've got there. And it's vital. It's, I can't leave it, can't leave it set. And the only way you could fence it off would be to fence the cows out of that section line totally. And I'm not asking for a cattle gate or nothing like that. I don't want a cattle gate. And all I want is a plain gate and be a reasonable gate. I don't want to leave it closed continually. I just want to, right to close it when I've got cows in there. And that has been, I had a little kick from a neighbor that thought I should, he should be able to, I shouldn't be able to use it at all. And because basically, he was kicking because he constructed a fence on my land. And there was some disagreement over that. It felt that if he wanted to use the section line to turn his cows on, he should put the fence on his side. And so eventually, with the advice of Deputy Weber, he decided that maybe he'd put the fence on his side. And so I talked to him here Friday morning to, I was going to call him, but I looked over across. I can see this pasture and this road and this fence from my home. It's about a mile and a quarter away. But anyway, my pasture was, I had my gate open like I, he kicked. And so I told him that eventually, he agreed that if I just shut it when I had cattle in there or needed it for water, that was okay. But I looked across there Friday morning after that wind, and I had my hayfield full of cows. And so I called him up. I figured it was his. He's the only one that has cows in that area close to me. And he said yes. He said he guessed he could have because he left the gate open. He didn't think the cows would come south and find the gate. Well, cows are cows, and I can't feature a cowman thinking he can leave a gate open and a cow won't find it. And these cows had a pretty good breeze behind to push them, and so out they come. So I had to go over there and chase the cows out of my lane into my pasture because the gate was open. And on the way getting them out of my pasture and out of my hayfields and out of my renters' bales, he could start, he come down the road with another bunch that had gotten out. And so I finally got him flagged down so I could talk to him. He acted like he didn't want to talk to me. I don't know because he's afraid I was going to give him hell for leaving his gate open and letting the cows out or whether he was embarrassed because I caught him riding in the pickup with his significant other instead of his wife. Now, I don't know which one. But anyway, he said it was all right with him if I got it made legal to close it when I had cows there.
You, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Do you own, you own the land on both sides of this?
Yes, I do. I don't think that really, if you look at the land, it says adjoining landowners. And he doesn't, he doesn't have any land against this trail that I want to fence across at all. It's all mine. But he, I, he did inform me that I was coming up here today. And he says, that's okay. And I didn't have the time at that time. I didn't have a copy of the agenda, so I didn't know what time to tell him. But he's not here today, and that I see anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I think he can take his, his letter that he has as a petition. And it says that all the landowners should be notified, not less than 10 days. I guess if he's the only landowner, I'll make a motion to let him put his gates up. He said he's not going to, only when they're livestock are present, never be locked. I don't have a problem with that.
Do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. Jay or anyone, any comments?
Of course, I don't know all the details, but Jay Alderman with the state's attorney's office. My only question would be, if there is one additional landowner that should be noticed, they would have to be noticed as per that statute, which would require a literal notice other than just the fact we're here today.
The statute doesn't say anything about 10 days. It just, adjoining landowners, which to me is, is the, probably isn't even required. But I did tell him, I wanted him to be aware of the...
But you say he doesn't have any land that it joins where, from where you're going to put the gate across, going down to the gravel pit, it's your, it's all on your land.
Just for clarification, it does in fact say 10 days. And you do have to, right, right here, not less than 10 days. And petition by a majority of the landowners, if... And petition by a majority of the landowners, if Mr. Lochner is the majority landowner, then his petition is, it doesn't need to be signed by anyone else. However, the notice shall be mailed by the, technically the auditor, but planning and zoning covers that for the auditor to all of said landowners, which be. And I don't know if there's another adjoining landowner or not. I guess I take your word that there isn't, so.
Well, I need to where, where the road is and I've got a map here if you want to look at it. You'll probably hear about it if it's not. Ends in his.
Any?
Well, I was just going to say I, I don't see any problem with him having a gate there. We have purchased gravel from him before out of that gravel pit and we probably intend to try and reach an agreement to purchase some more gravel or have some more crush in that area if we can find it. And so I'm not opposed to the, to the gate. If we don't do a gate that's unlocked, we might get pushed into the position that we may have to put a livestock guard and he really doesn't want one of those and the livestock guard's over 15,000. So I think the gate's the best solution.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anyone else wishing to comment? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. It's 10:30, Holly, do we go downstairs now?
No, can I respectfully request we take a short break and allow staff to get restructured and set back up?
It's my motion.
Motion and a second to take a short break. Need a motion.
Good to make a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to convene as a Board of Adjustment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Good morning, Dan Jennison, Pennington County Planning Director. Item A is a variance request for George and Robin Pendo and Tracy Maury to reduce the minimum required lot size from 40 acres to 27.2 acres in a general ag zoning district. The applicant has actually requested to have this denied without prejudice, being he is still working out some issues and doesn't know how soon it's going to be before he can work those issues out. So that was his request to have this denied without prejudice.
That's my motion, Mr. Chair.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion, any other comments from anyone? Hearing done, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Motion to come out of Board of Adjustment.
Motion and a second to adjourn as a Board of Adjustments. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent Agenda.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion of the vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item B is a minor plat and subdivision regulation variance 1327 and 1313 for Tracy Maury and George and Robin Pendo and denial recommended without prejudice. Item C is a first reading and public hearing of rezoning request 1320 for Phyllis Gilbert Trust and Charles Halverson and Lorraine Smith as the agent and approval is, was recommended. Item D is a layout plat 1330, any subdivision regulation variance 1314 for John Donahue, fifth land serving as the agent and approval was recommended. Item E is a layout plat 1329 and for John and Jenny Boland to create Lot 1 of Boland Subdivision and approval was recommended.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed? If not, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further comments? Hearing done, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item F.
Good morning, Agenda Item F is a first reading and public hearing of rezon 1321 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1313. I'll stop briefly and introduce myself, sorry. I'm Melissa Anzeller with the Pennington County Planning Department. Moving on with this request, this is a request to rezon 56.13 acres from General Agricultural District and Low Density Residential to Highway Service District and to amend the Comprehensive Plan to changes the future land use from Limited Agricultural District to Highway Service District. The applicant is Rushmore Cave LLC. The agents is Tom Hagan and Bobby Sumby. This property is located at 13620 Highway 40, approximately five miles east of Keystone along Highway 40. This property is home to the well-known Rushmore Cave and does contain a visitor's center, gift shop, zip line ride, interactive dark theater, parking area. Oh, I can. I was going to do that at the end. Dan suggested I do let you know what the Planning Commission recommended and I was going to do that at the end, I'm sorry. But I will let you know that Planning Commission did recommend to deny these requests without prejudice. So I will go on with the review of my staff report, just letting you know what is on the property right now. As I mentioned, the cave, visitor's center, zip line ride, theater, parking area, shop, barn, bunkhouse and a single-family residence. This has all been approved with the exception of the residence through approval of a conditional use permit that was originally approved back in 2011. That brought the cave operation into compliance and allowed for the expansion of a zip line ride on the property. Again, in 2012, the applicant amended that conditional use permit to also add an interactive dark theater. This was most recently reviewed and approved on August 12, 2013 with 11 conditions. Rushmore Cave has submitted several development requests with our office in the past, including some plats and rezones. They previously had multiple lots that they combined into one lot. When they did that, they also obtained a portion of the neighboring property so that they gained some frontage along Highway 40. So they do meet the requirement of the zoning ordinance to have frontage along Highway 40 of at least 50 feet. They actually have 185 feet of frontage along Highway 40. Access to the property right now is provided via 30-foot wide access easement. This has been in place since 1952. There is a 20-foot paved road in that easement. With this rezon request, the applicants haven't indicated their specific future plans for the property. I do know they want to continue operating the cave, but I did outline the uses that are allowed in a highway service district in my staff report in accordance with Section 210 of the zoning ordinance. Those allowed uses in a highway service district include hotels and motels, eating and drinking establishments, service stations and garages, gift shops, vacation home rentals, so on and so forth. I'll move forward here. There is a mix of zoning in the area. We have agricultural zoning, residential zoning and some highway service district zoning across the road. When we get the projector up, I'll show you a map of where the closest highway service district zoning is. It's located right across Highway 40. It was approved in 1992 to bring the property into compliance. There was a campground and some cabins that used to be on that property. I don't believe it's operating at this time. The property has been degraded to some extent. The next nearest highway service district zoning is approximately a mile and a half further west along Highway 40. This property was rezoned in 1983 to allow for a gift shop. Again, I don't believe this property currently has a commercial use on it. According to the applicant, Rushmore Cave has been operated commercially on the property since 1952. Originally in 1927, they started to let people visit the cave, but it was a farm back at that time. But in 1952, it was a full-scale commercial operation. Zoning in Pennington County went in place in 1978. At that time, they applied the general ag zoning to the property. I don't specifically know why. I can guess based on its large lot size and proximity to other ag zoning in the area, they gave it the ag zoning designation. The property remained grandfathered until 2011 when they did obtain a conditional use permit to allow the recreational resort on the property. In consideration, however, that there is a commercial use on the property and it will likely continue to be there for a long time, it is seemingly appropriate for the property to be zoned commercially. Furthermore, the lot size of the property, which is over 56 acres, is apparently sufficient to accommodate uses allowed in a highway service district and any utilities that would be needed to go with that, parking and septic and so on. The Pennington County Comprehensive Plan does designate the future land use of the property to be limited ag. So as part of this request, they are requesting to amend that as well. In review of the Comprehensive Plan, Section 6.3, which is commercial land use, states that most commercial development is drawn to major transportation routes and the majority of commercial activity is directly related to the tourist industry, including tourist attractions. And it appears the applicant's request to rezon the property to highway service is in compliance with this plan. As such, staff is recommending approval of the applicant's rezon and Comprehensive Plan Amendment requests. In consideration of the following, Rushmore Cave has been operated commercially on the property for over 60 years. The size of the property is apparently sufficient to accommodate the uses allowed in highway service, as I mentioned. It is close to other highway service district zoning right across the road and the uses of the property are seemingly more consistent with commercial land use rather than agricultural as defined in the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of rezon 1321 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1313. As I previously mentioned, Planning Commission did make a motion to deny these requests without prejudice. And I'll be happy to bring up the PowerPoint now and show you the zoning map and outline those areas of highway service. And then if you have questions for me, I'll answer those. I know there's a lot of folks in the audience here to speak today, including the applicant and some surrounding landowners, so. Will you hit the lights, Karen?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Would you tell the commissioners basically everything in the 32nd thumbnail picture of what the Planning Commission did and the motion that was first made? And then the, not just the.
Yep, sure. I can explain a little bit for that, Planning Commission. We heard a lot of input from the applicant and the surrounding landowners. There was a lot of back and forth and the Planning Commission voted 5 to 2 originally to deny the request. And then the applicant requested that it instead be denied without prejudice. So they did rescind the previous motion and make the motion instead to deny without prejudice at the applicant's request. And that vote again was 5 to 2. So there were five in favor of denying, originally denying the request and two opposed to it and then again to deny without prejudice. That motion was 5 to 2. Well? Yeah, you're going to have to. Sorry, my mouse was supposed to work from back here, but it's not. So Dan will bring up the presentation. Should be the farthest one on the right. Oh, I can now, thank you, yep. So this is a zoning map of the surrounding area. The subject property, Rushmore Cave, is outlined in gray here. There is this pink parcel across the road. That's the nearest highway service commercial zoning. And then the next nearest being a mile and a half down the road over here to the west. The other surrounding zoning, the yellow, is residential. The green is all agricultural. And then this is a planned unit development for Rushmore Ranch. Thank you. This parcel, though it looks small on the map, is about six acres. I did try to zoom out so you could see almost all the way to Keystone what the surrounding zoning is. And then this is the Pennington County line here. So that's the next nearest highway service. That's the campgrounds and cabins that's not in use. And then this is about a mile and a half down the road to the west. It did include here a map. I know we have a lot of landowners here that are going to want to show you where they are in relation to the property. And so I just included this map and this one so they could point that out to you folks today, since we don't have Rapid Map available up here, so. I am using the microphone, is it just not carrying well? Okay, I'll try to direct comments both ways.
Mr. Chair, that piece of highway service across the road from that, that little pink piece up there, whatever you want to call it, I guess it's gone now.
Yeah, I don't know what happened.
That's closed, though, isn't it? It's not being operated, that's the most healthy day.
To the best of my knowledge, there is an old sign up there that says campgrounds and cabins and some old buildings, but they look pretty dilapidated. So I don't believe it's in operation. However, they could begin operating at any time without any approval from our office since it is zoned. To the best of my knowledge, yes. I've not seen it ever in operation. Can I answer any other questions in the meantime?
Maybe it's not so much directed at you as it would be to Jay. But I remember in recent years, there was a ruling at Supreme Court about the neighbors of being inconvenienced and that was not supposed to be part of our decision. It was supposed to be strictly a legal decision. Do you remember, it was a Rapid City case?
I'll let Jay answer that because I'm not familiar with that, so.
I think, I think the case you were talking about involved, it was on Haynes Avenue. It was a casino kind of fight between the folks that want to put the casino in and the surrounding landowners. And one of the things the Supreme Court pointed out is that it's not, the decision can't be supported merely by how many people are for or against. It has to come down to actual substantive argument. And in that particular case, it focused around the crime rate that was alleged to likely increase in and around a casino. And then secondly, if I remember right, it was about property values. So in other words, there were allegations that crime rate would increase and everyone's property values would decline. And those were statements made at the podium, but were not really supported with any facts or evidence. And so in that particular case, I think the City Council for Rapid City voted initially to deny the permit for the casino and the Supreme Court eventually overruled that and said, what you had were allegations with nothing supporting it beyond just the spoken words at the podium. And Supreme Court said that wasn't sufficient. That was arbitrary essentially and you have to go beyond that. So I don't know what the arguments will be made here today because I've not heard them. But what I take from that particular case is that it's not enough to simply say property values will be decreased or in that case, crime rates will go up. You actually have to have some statistics. So maybe involve the police department or the sheriff's office, equalization to show that in like scenarios, property values have actually declined or crime rate has gone up, much like presenting a case in a courtroom. So hopefully that helps a little bit.
Okay, any, any other comments from the commission?
Yes, I, my only comment is I find it very strange that this property is mainly surrounded by low-density residential with one little piece of commercial across the street that's not really commercial or highway service. And yet the planning department is recommending that we change it to highway service. I guess I, I don't, I don't get that.
Sure. I guess in response to that, I did outline the reasons why in my report. You know, I really looked at the Comprehensive Plan and what it outlines for commercial use and I thought this was a good fit for that. It's a tourist-oriented business. It's located on a major transportation route. And, you know, it's been in operation for a long time and it's going to continue to be in operation for a long time. So in my opinion and in my writing, I guess I thought I, I tried to explain why we did support the request.
Well, yeah, there's no, I mean, we're not debating whether the cave should be in operation or not. Of course it should. We're debating whether we need an amusement park in the middle of a residential area.
And, and I have to look a little bit larger and look at all of the uses that are allowed in a highway service district and take that into consideration as, as well when reviewing the requests. So I guess that's, that's what I did. And certainly that's what the neighbors are here to speak about is, you know, their concerns if the property does expand into more than what it, what it currently is. But I, I can't. what it currently is, but I can't really speculate that it's going to be one thing or another. I look at the zoning ordinance and what the uses are allowed in that zoning ordinance, and I felt that, you know, based on the history of the property and the uses, and I thought it was appropriate, so...
Mr. Chair. Could we please hear from the owners what their plans are, if it is indeed for amusement park or whatever? I would like to hear that before I hear the objections.
Yep, and I think the applicant would be more than happy to get up here and tell you his plans, so Tom will come up if you want to enter.
Just so everyone understands, what we will do is do somewhat the same as they do in a committee hearing in the legislature. We will hear from the proponents first, and then we will give the opponents equal time. So if you will identify yourselves and proceed.
My name is Tom Hagan. I'm the general manager and one of the four owners of Rushmore Cave. My business partners include Bobby Sunbee of Ross and Neil Realtors here in Rapid City, Ross Johnson of RJ Design here in Rapid City, and Paul Thorsonson of Cadel Thorsonson, also here in Rapid City. We have purchased the property in 2007. It was a commercially active business and been in continual operation since 1952, as we've stated. You received a letter in your packets that outlined what I felt were five major issues in this. I'm not going to take a lot of your time today, I know you're busy people, but I would like to touch on those briefly and then touch on also the issue of a possible amusement park and what, and that whole argument. First, the five points, and we believe these points, for the most part, go to the objectivity of the argument, which is basically what the attorney just got up and said, "You need to be objective." We meet the criteria and accepted uses for highway service district as described in Pennington County zoning ordinances. We also meet the description of highway service district as described in the Pennington County Comprehensive Plans. Now, these aren't my opinions. These are the results of research done by the planning and zoning staff who deal with, of course, zoning issues on a daily basis. Second, the property directly across the highway is zoned highway service district. So if you're looking geographically, do we qualify? My answer would be, I believe we do. Obviously, a board of commissioners, just like yourselves, in 1992 decided that this geographic location was fit for highway service district then, and I don't believe anything has changed geographically since that time. See, Rushmore Cave is currently zoned gen ag. Now, a general agriculture, the intent of that is to promote agriculture, and I understand that. But this property, since the time that we've had zoning in Pennington County, has never had a primary agricultural use. I wish I could provide insight into why it had was zoned general agriculture to begin with. I obviously can't. LaSanne's done some research, she cannot either. We were a commercially operated tourism business for 26 years before there was zoning in Pennington County, so why that decision was made then, I don't have any idea. I know that our primary use is not an agricultural use now nor has it been in the past. The description of highway service district states that most commercial development is drawn towards transportation routes, and the majority of commercial activity is directly related to the tourism industry, including tourist attractions. Right now, other tourist businesses that operate under that designation include Bear Country, Reptile Gardens, and Prairie Berry Winery. Rushmore Cave, that's, and that's the facts of the thing. We feel that we should have the right to operate under the same competitive designation that they have. Finally, on that, it talks about Rushmore, and this one is not objective, I will go with that, talks a little bit about the conditional use process and how it affects the way we do our business. Traditionally, we work very hard, May through October. We have guests coming from out of the area, and it's our job to make sure they have the best experience they can have while they're in the Black Hills. At the end of that, we get together as an ownership group, we get together and we find what other attractions we might want to introduce to help bring more people to the area. So we spend a few months gathering information, gathering ideas. We then meet with our other owners, and we discuss and kind of find the merits of each of those ideas. One of the things we do discuss is the impact any of our projects we could bring might have on our neighbors. An example of that, when the helicopter business in Keystone got moved a few years ago, we were approached about being the home for the helicopter tours of Mount Rushmore. After discussion, we chose not to do that, primarily because we knew the effect it would have and the impact it would have on our neighbors of having a helicopter dropping in and out of our valley every day. So we do think about that as we think about our projects. Right now, once we've come down to where we have an attraction or project that we'd like to move forward with, where we would like to be able to at that point, purchase our permits and begin work, we currently have to put together our arguments, come in front of planning and zoning, have a conditional use permit hearing, and we never know coming out the other end what's going to happen. Those permit hearings do many times come down to the opinions, of course, of us versus our neighbors or us versus the planning and zoning committees, so we can't start any financing, we can't start any construction, or we can't start anything until those are resolved. What that does is that makes it a very small margin of error for any project that we would want to do. Tourism in South Dakota, many people tell you is a 100-day business from Memorial Day to Labor Day. The reality is it's shorter than that. We have a very good Memorial Day, then we drop off for a time. Before Labor Day, we drop off for a time, then we have a very good Labor Day. We actually have about 80 days to really, to really make a go of it. And if we were to lose Memorial Day, which is one of the biggest days of the year, it 'd be very detrimental to our ability to continue to move forward. So the use process right now slows us down, and it gives us a very small margin of error for trying to continue to move forward with attractions, and that has been somewhat of a deterrent in the past as we looked at projects, how long it would take to put them in, so... Now, getting beyond those, we had a meeting with planning and zoning last week, and the issue that was the primary issue in that that we spent the most time on was this, that somewhere down the road, someone, if we were given highway service designation, somewhere down the road, someone could come in and they could build a very high-impact project that would affect property taxes and quality of life for our neighbors, and what was presented was an amusement park. And we spent quite a bit of time discussing this. However, as I looked back on it, I realized there was one part of this argument that we didn't discuss at all, and that is some of the accepted and primary uses we could use right now under general agriculture that could do the same thing. I've gone through the ordinance, and these are also projects that could be done right now as we speak without any permit hearings or without any input from our neighbors as we sit. Under gen ag, I could put a water treatment, purification, storage, and pumping facility on my property without ever having to hear from my neighbors. I could do a temporary quarry. Black Hills or Badlands Sand and Gravel's just down the road, if they decided they were doing a project in the center of the hills and wanted to put a quarry on our property so that it'd be closer to where their project was, we could let them build that without ever having to come before planning and zoning or without having to hear from our neighbors. Of course, the impact from that would be heavy truck traffic, heavy equipment operating every day, and quite a bit of dust. A sawmill, there's a lot of extra timber in the hills right now with the bug trees. A sawmill could go in our property, again, could be built tomorrow. Nobody could say a thing about it. Drilling for oil or natural gas or the extraction of sand, gravel, or minerals provide the construction permits obtained. We could have mining on our property. And then, of course, the number one use for gen ag is general farming and harvesting. We could have a hog farm or a poultry farm built. We have on our property on the south end, we have a large field that there's nothing in right now. There's nothing there. This spring, we could order turkeys, or we could order hogs, and we could build enclosures, and we could start a hog farm, and again, it wouldn't come in front of the county for a permit hearing, and it wouldn't go to our neighbors. So the idea that withholding highway service district when we qualify for highway service district in an effort to protect the property values or the quality of life of our neighbors, that's a pretty hard argument to make because all those things are a threat right now with the zoning we have. I would never do that. I think of our neighbors as I move forward with our property, and I've done that in the past, and I'll continue to do that in the future, but that's definitely something that needs to be considered when we consider this issue. Rushmore Cave has always been a positive influence on the community, and I want to just very briefly touch on what I mean when I say that. In 2007, we purchased Rushmore Cave. The cave employed one-year-round salaried employee during the peak season and 17 seasonal employees. In 2013, we employ five-year-round salaried employees, and we employ 34 seasonal employees. Our employees come from Pennington County and just over the line into Custer County. We don't do international help. These aren't people that we ship in from Eastern Europe. These are people from Pennington County we're providing jobs to. When we bought the cave in 2007, we got the wage and salary reports. Previous to 2007, a majority of the jobs at Rushmore Cave were minimum-wage jobs, and 2013, less than 10% of the positions that we made available were paid minimum wage, and that was two people, and they were 15 years old, it was their first job, and they were cashiers, and by the end of the summer, they were being paid more than minimum wage. So we're not only offering more jobs than we have previously, but better jobs than we did previously. Between 2007 and 2013, our taxable revenue has gone up over 100%, which means we're now paying more taxes to the county coffers, to the state coffers, to the federal coffers than has ever been paid from our property before. Property improvements. At the time we purchased the property, there were two issues, one on the north end of the property, one on the south end of the property. On the north end was a dump for four generations. The people that owned the cave had been using a hillside to get rid of used materials, used appliances, used furniture, used everything. We took it upon ourselves to clean that up, took a lot of 30-yard dumpsters and a lot of trips with a trailer, but we've actually made our property better in that area by bringing it back to its natural state. On the south end of the property, in conjunction with a bunkhouse is located there, there was a septic system that was very outdated. It was essentially a 55-gallon drum buried in the ground, and it was in a place that in today's standards, it was too close to Foster Creek, which is a drainage that runs through there that it wouldn't even be allowed. We went through, of course, dug that up, replaced that with modern septic and a pumping station to move everything up away, protecting not only our property, protecting Foster Creek and those folks that live down Foster Creek from us. Curb appeal. At the time we purchased Rushmore Cave, I'm sure you'd all had driven by Highway 40 a few times and seen the bright red buildings with the white flat roofs sitting on the side of the hill. I would say it could be best described as outdated and out of place. Since that time, we've put brown paint over red paint where we needed to, and put cedar cement fiberboard siding over the buildings to make them look natural and make them look like they belong in the Black Hills. They now are brown buildings with copper roofs, and they're very vintage-looking, and we've really improved the look of it. And as some of our neighbors can tell you, property, or I mean curb appeal means a lot when you have property. If you drive down Highway 40, you're going to see some very nicely landscaped property. That's important, and it's not just important to us, it's obviously important to our neighbors. And these are some of the positive things that we've brought with us as our time at Rushmore Cave, and these are the kind of things that we're going to think about and continue to do as we move forward as our time with Rushmore Cave. Do you have any other questions for me at this point that I could help you with?
You talked about planning. What are your plans?
Well, we're looking at doing family-friendly rides. That's what we're looking at doing. Specifically, specific what we're doing? We don't have specifics. I gave a list at the last meeting, and I'll go ahead and give one at this meeting, of projects that we have looked into in varying degrees. We have looked into miniature golf, we've looked into laser tag, we've looked into a ride similar to what the Alpine Slide in Keystone is. We've looked into a thing called an Ogo Ball, which is a 12-foot inflatable ball you put a kid in and roll them down the hill. We've looked at, we've looked at several things, and to say that we're going to do any or all of them at this point, I think, would be premature. I have not signed contracts, I've not, I've not done anything. I've looked at things and I've considered things. What we're going to do down the road, we're going to continue to look for unique attractions that will bring people to South Dakota. When we put in the Soaring Eagle zip line, that was the first commercial zip line within a 400-mile area, and it was only the second zip line of its type in the world. When we put in our active dark ride that we put in two years ago, that was the first ride of its type in North America and only the second ride of its type in the world. So when you ask me what we're doing down the road, it's hard to say, because what we look for, are we looking for unique attractions that people can't find 30 minutes from their house? You know, I don't want to put in something that if someone from Minneapolis wants to go on vacation, I don't want to put in something that's in Minneapolis. I want to put something that's unique to the Black Hills and give those people a reason to drive across the state of South Dakota and to come out here and spend time. And so when you ask me what we're going to do, I can tell you we're going to do unique, family-friendly attractions. I can't tell you precisely what those are going to be at this time.
Any other questions or comments? The, I guess, my not being familiar with this project, when you put in the zip line, what process did you go through? What did you have to do?
Oh, it's a conditional use process. So the whole thing, since you hadn't been, I'm going to tell you a little bit why we did it to begin with. Rushmore Cave has been there since 1952, but what we found is not just at Rushmore Cave, but at cave tours in general, I belong to a National Cave Association, cave tours had started to decline in popularity, and we were faced with an additional problem, and that was the two most popular caves in our area are run by the US government, Wind Cave and Jewel Cave. And we hit a place in our business where we were having problems competing. They had very low ticket prices, and they didn't need to have higher ticket prices because they were subsidized, and our competition level was starting, we were starting to fall off. So we tried to think of things that we could do that would set us apart from those two caves, and we came up with the idea of the zip line, as we've done at other caves all around the United States, and it was something that seemed unique to our area. So we came to it. One of the things we had to do is we had to come up with a plan of what it was going to be, how it was going to work. Included in that plan, I also put background of the gentleman that designed it and was going to install it as far as his safety background, his business background. We took that information, we filled out a conditional use permit application, and we brought all our information to the county. And they stood up in front of county planning and zoning, and they said, "This is where it's going to go on our property, this is what it's going to be, this is kind of the history of the ride and the person that's putting it in, it's safe, and we are due diligence, and this is what we have." Our neighbors had a chance, of course, just like today, to get up and voice their opinion, and at that point, as the first initial one, we were pretty much on our own, there was no one there. And we got up, the commissioners had a vote, and they approved us to do it, and we put in the zip line.
Mr. Chair. What year did you put your zip line in and get your conditional use permit?
2011.
I think that we were all on the board, I believe, when that was passed.
Okay, anyone else? Do you have anything further? Okay, if you're done, we will take any other positive comments, and if there are none, we'll listen to opponents. Are you a proponent or an opponent?
I am a proponent.
Identify yourself, please.
My name is Deborah Hannah, and I am the Assistant General Manager at Rushmore Cave. I also live in the valley, just actually right across the road from Rushmore Cave. I've been an employee of Rushmore Cave since the summer of 2009, so I'm coming up on my sixth summer out at Rushmore Cave. I also have lived in the valley since 2009. As I walk out my doors of my dining room, I have a deck that faces the valley, and when I go out there to have coffee in the morning, it's a beautiful place. The valley is absolutely gorgeous, and I love living out there. What I've heard my neighbors say who live adjacent to me is that there's a lot of screaming that goes on, and it interrupts the peacefulness of the valley. I have to say that living in the same area, that I don't really hear that. I do hear screaming, but I also hear lots of laughter and lots of joy, and for me, that's the sound of having fun, and that's the sound of having a good time. I understand that sometimes it might interrupt the peacefulness of the valley, but I guess I would say that the rumble of motorcycles driving through our valley, which happens on a pretty regular basis from May through October, actually is more disturbing to me than any sounds that I hear from the zip line. Now, I'm sure that you're saying to yourselves, "Well, yes, but she's an employee of Rushmore Cave," and that is true, and I wanted to be very upfront with that, but I take great pride in being an employee at Rushmore Cave. When I started in 2009, I was there as a seasonal employee and was a supervisor for Rushmore Cave. I have since, I have since... I have since moved on to be a year-round employee, and I take great pride in the place that I work. It was really important to me, and has been important to me in my professional life, that I work in a place that not only, that I feel as though I can contribute to as a professional person, but also as just a person of integrity. I think that Rushmore Cave has done an exceptional job of trying to blend in to the beauty of the Black Hills. We have done some professional landscaping in this last year that is absolutely awesome and has included wildflowers from the area, and it's just absolutely beautiful. I take great pride in working there. I feel very privileged to work at Rushmore Cave and really feel as though the owners and the managers there really take into account our neighbors and try to really be very good neighbors and try very hard to maintain a good relationship with people. So I guess I just felt really, not only as an employee of Rushmore Cave, but also as a neighbor who lives out there and who actually has tried, while we rent our property, we are actually looking at buying our property at this point because we love it out there so much. So I guess I just wanted to speak in support of not only my employer, but also the place that I feel has been a very good neighbor in our valley and continues to help grow the area. So thank you for your time, I appreciate that.
Question for you, ma'am.
Yes.
Do you show us where you're, or at least...
Yes. I can't see that very well, to be honest with you.
If she'll hit the lights, and then if you want to use this...
Sure. Is this, woo, there we go, pretty spiffy. I live right about there, kinda, right about there. Right across from, right across the creek and about right there. The first bridge right across the creek from the cave.
The road that abandoned...
Yes, we're on the same side of the road as the campground, just right across the creek from that campground, correct? Yep, you're welcome.
Anyone else? If not, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tom Pitlick. I purchased lots three of five of the Forty Oaks subdivision, which on the screen lies adjacent to the subject property just at the bottom of the screen.
Point set out for you, Tom's right down here, this is Rushmore Cave, and he's...
There's a little Twisted Oaks Trail, it's a little road, and I have two lots that...
See, there's a house there, right off of Twisted Oak Trail?
That is not mine, the lots I have are vacant lots. Just like, I submitted a letter earlier, which I trust is in your packet, and I won't take your time reiterating everything I put in there, but I would like to make a couple points, if I may. First, just to briefly address the property across the road, the six points some acres that is also zoned as a highway district. I'm not familiar with that property from a long time ago, but I can tell you that the campground is not operational, and by the condition of the camps, the cabins, I would say it's been quite some time since it has been operational. I would also point out that based on the most recent, recently passed floodplain zone, that approximately, it looks like a half of that property is in the floodplain, which to me would compromise the value of that as a commercial property. I'd also like to briefly address the property values. Again, the lots I purchased are Long and Battle Creek, and I purchased those within last year. I would point out that at the zoning commission meeting, and this is in the draft minutes, Mr. John Preston, realtor and owner of Black Battle Creek Agency, appeared and stated that he feels the property values near the area of the cave have been reduced because of the additional attractions added to the subject property. And I'd also point out, I'm not an expert witness on this, but having purchased that property in the last year, had I known at that time, or if this property had been zoned to the highway service district, not only would I paid, not paid what I paid, but I probably would not have purchased it at all. And just briefly, on some of the comments that were made about the uses that could be made of the property now, you know, a lot of those issues, especially the confinement, livestock confinement type of activities, well, they may be permitted under the current zoning. I would question that EPA may have some issues with some of those types of activities. And finally, just to kind of summarize, at least the zoning we have now offers some protection to the landowners around there. As you can see, the Section 10, the highway service district, there's 16 things that are allowed, and not very many are anything anybody want to live beside. And if this ordinance, this change in zoning was allowed to pass, it would basically silence the voice of all the landowners around there as to what those activities could be. And I guess I would respectfully request that you can take that consideration, and I would ask that you both should deny this request. Thank you.
Question for you, sir. When you purchased your two lots, were you aware that that property just across Highway 40 was zoned highway service?
I was not, but I also realized that it was very close to the creek, and it hadn't been operated, obviously, for years. And I was aware of the zoning, that the current zoning for the Rushmore Cave, and I was also aware that was a special use permit that allowed the zip line there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment?
Good morning, my name is Rita Wagner. I am the owner of Lot 6 in that Twisted Oak Trail, Forty Oaks subdivision.
It's hard to see, I'm sorry, but she's right down, this is Lot 6, here in the Forty Oaks.
I thought that's where...
Mr. Pitlick owns the adjacent lots here, and Rita's here.
Right, and the other individual who spoke has land beyond, you know, farther south of that.
Which inch?
Deb? Proponent side.
So are we clear on the property's...
Hey, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. For seven and a half years, while my mother was going through her cancer treatment, Rapid City became my second home. I do have a home in Pierce, South Dakota. Just this past June, cashed in retirement funds in order to purchase this little over three acres, our little piece of, my little piece of heaven, something that I plan to use as an investment for my future, for my children, for my grandchildren. The appeal was, of course, the access to Rapid City, the creek, it's a beautiful valley, there's a lot of wildlife in the area, and, you know, I hope to build there soon. The cave, we're well aware, I was well aware that cave was there, it's an underground business, a business underground, I really didn't think it was going to be a concern. It should be fairly quiet or basically benign. But my concerns now are possible devaluation of the property, the quality of life that I hope to someday experience there, and future development that may occur in the event that is sold. So this was my investment in the area, help me protect that investment. Thank you.
Any questions by the commission?
Good morning, I'm Arlette Schweitzer. Thank you for hearing us out. I live at 13602 Highway 40. So the cave property, then there is a canyon, and then the creek, and then it's our property. We too have beautified our property. We looked for over 20 years before we purchased this property, and we've lived there now for over 20 years. It was a horse field, which we turned into almost a park-like housing area. Our home is our life, which we too, I won't reiterate what other people said, but we too want to pass this on to our children and grandchildren. When we bought the land, it was a peaceful place, a peaceful valley, and the cave were, the Pollens that owned it, they were wonderful neighbors, absolutely wonderful neighbors. They were part of the neighbors, they lived there, and they lived there year-round. We wanted the stream, we wanted the wildlife, we wanted the peace, that's why we moved to the country. We absolutely love our land. And the last time, when there was a meeting last time, the planning meeting, my husband spoke, I wasn't here, I work at North Middle School, I'm taking a morning off now, but it was brought up that Mr. Sunby offered to buy the land from anybody that was at that meeting. He said, "I'll just buy your land up at fair market value." Well, none of us really want to sell our land, we certainly never will. But the point is, is if there is that kind of monies, could we just leave, maybe this is just an idea, but could we just maybe leave the cave the way it is and use that considerable amount of money to purchase land on Highway 16 or someplace where it would be more available to tourists? They wouldn't have a 16-grade hill to go down and all of that, because that would be a considerable amount of money. And then we could still be good neighbors, have the cave, and they could have their amusement, or whatever they wanted to do in another area. Or maybe they want to sell the cave for a fair market price, I don't know, but that is, that's my hope. I just want you to know, I don't, I want to speak from my heart. Our home and our land is our dream, has been our dream. We love our dream. Our grandchildren were raised there, they played in the stream, and they made wood homes, and we want to pass that on to them. The screaming from the zip line was the beginning of the end there, and I pleaded with everyone then, and I don't, we can't go back, that's there. But it isn't right to sit on my deck and hear that, and I know someone said it's a joyful noise. No, I work at a school, a joyful noise is children on a playground. A joyful noise is not having someone scream every minute, almost of every day, and hearing that every day. There are times I'm working in my yard, I just want to stand up and holler, "Shut up!" I just can hardly take it. And so I'm pleading with you for our American dream, to let us have our American dream in our peace and quiet, in our way of life. And I too want to, we too want to be good neighbors with the cave, but we don't want any more screaming and attractions like that. The place across, that's a commercial land that they've talked about, has been defunct since we've been there in 20 years. It was, it's a defunct campground, broken buildings, an old laundromat that have broken windows, and it is so close to the creek, I know now it could never be what it was at one time. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions by the commission?
Good morning, my name is Lance Rombo. My wife and I own 13667 Lost Cave Court. Right on the money. We are currently building a house right there, we hope to be living in it within the next two to three months. If everything's going right, they're actually pouring footings this morning, wind and weather. My first comment is that I keep hearing, or get the impression, that these folks are looking for an expedient for development. It sounds like they can do anything and everything they need to with the current zoning, but if they go to the highway district, it allows them to get the fast track. And according to us that, it also would affect our ability to have some input. That is my impression, I don't know if that's correct or not, but that's what I've gotten from these meetings. I think it's very important for the neighborhood to have an input, and I think that Mr. Hagan and the folks he works with have done a very good job of trying to get that input. But just because the criteria is there and is met for highway district, to me, does not mean it has to be a highway district. I have been through this before in a different place. Back in the 90s, my wife and I bought a house. We had ag land behind us. It was wonderful. Somebody bought that land, and they rezoned it, and they made us many promises. "It's going to be wonderful, we'll get you input, we'll take care of you, don't worry about it." Five years later, things changed. A developer took over. The next thing we had were apartment houses looking down upon our backyard. I know that you have said that the possibility of property values being affected should not be taken into account. It has, in fact, anecdotally for me, been a problem, because when it came time to sell that property and to move back to South Dakota, I had numerous people walk through that house and say, "Oh, my word, this is wonderful, this is great, we love it," until they saw those apartment houses. And then it was a quick turnaround and, "See you later." It also took us five times longer than anybody else on our block and in our area to sell our property, and we presume that is because of what was developed behind us. And so it is with some worry-ness that I look at this, and I'm concerned when some, I know that they want to do the right thing, but things happen. We don't know what's going to happen down the road, and an opportunity may come that they may have to jump at that could affect our quality of life. My wife and I echo the sentiments of everybody you've heard here. We've done the same thing. We've owned this property for five years. This is where we're going to retire, this is where we want to be. My wife and I grew up in Rapid City. We left for quite a while because I was in the service elsewhere, but we came back to the Black Hills. And it's for this reason that we came back to the Black Hills, was to have this kind of a property. I don't want to stand in the way of development and success for the cave, but I do want to make sure that we work together as a partner and that we're able to have some input down the road so that everybody can be happy, make it a win-win situation rather than a win-lose or a lose-lose. What else can I say for you? I'm done.
Thank you. Any comments or questions by the commission?
My name is Mike Wharton. We're owners of 13636 Twisted Oak Trail, which is just south of the cave. Want to start by saying, myself and my family, my father Dan, we're friends of the cave and the ownership. We support their zip line, we'll continue to support their development of the cave. However, we just don't want to lose our voice in the future if perhaps ownership changes or something down the line unforeseen. We don't want to lose our voice. So that's basically it.
Thank you. We have about three more minutes for the proponents, and then we'll, or opponents, and we'll close it to commission discussion.
Commissioners, glad to be here this morning. And we're both South Dakotans, and we've been in... My name is Colette Summers, my husband Ray. Yeah. And we've lived in Mitchell, South Dakota for over 20 years, and then from there graduated from high school and went on to, both went on to college, and then from there went on to the Air Force for over 30 years. And then we were stationed here at one time at Ellsworth Air Force Base. And from there, we began to love the hills more than ever, bought a piece of property right out, I had Dan and Arlette Schweitzer and the people that are, we're all friends with them, and that's how we're so connected. I was a nurse also, an RN, and also as a cancer... As a nurse also, an RN, and also as a cancer nurse, I can relate stress a great deal to cancer. And I think sometimes solitude is so wonderful in life. And I look at the flag and the peace that it gives us. And when you're sitting on your deck and you hear all of this noise, it's very difficult to enjoy family reunions and all the things that you bought the property for and why you're here and why you enjoy your life so much and the beauty of the hills. And I think that should be kept in quite perspective, you know, on why you're living in your homes that you're living, maybe in Hermosa or right here in the hills, and why would you like that to be right next door? So I'd like you to really consider that and think about it too before this is bought to a vote.
Now, I'd just like to add also, some of you may be aware that I have also been in the tourism business. I was the director of the Journey Museum for 11 years. So I can certainly appreciate the efforts on the part of Mr. Hagan and his owners to enhance the property value or enhance the property attractiveness to our visitors, to the Black Hills. And I appreciate that. But I think there's a point at which the compatibility of those enhancements, how that would impact its neighbors, I think that has to be given some serious consideration. I also would be concerned with the rezoning in that that would make it much easier for the owners of Rushmore Cave to give them much broader latitude without input from the surrounding community. So I think maintaining its current zoning status and having an opportunity for the neighbors to be heard with any proposals to change that status, I think that's an important consideration. And would hope that you as our governing body for the county would take that in consideration and vote no. Any questions?
Could you point out where you?
We, we're actually in Rushmore Ranch Estates, which is on the other side of the hill from this, from Rushmore Cave.
We moved here about 14 years ago in 2000. And our area is beautiful like Dan and Arlette. And when you move in the area, you just don't, as probably people in the hills, you know, you just don't move in. You're constantly, it takes to even plant a tree about six hours. You're moving all the rocks. You're moving everything, and...
We've made a considerable investment of our own time to improve our property.
And they have even made 10 times more. Their property is absolutely beautiful. And to even, and they're almost living on top of the zip line. So that's, you know, we come here as good friends, as also good neighbors, that this doesn't happen. It's the same thing in our area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Unless there's someone who has absolutely burning desire to speak, we will close the discussion and retain this to the commission. Is there any comments or questions that the commission wishes to present?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I believe I made these comments last time. And I think that we should go along with the neighborhood of being residential and low-density residential. And also that, I know that this cave has to live in the middle of these folks. So I see no reason why they can't proceed with the conditional use permit program rather than the rezoning. And then that way, it'll give the neighbors some peace of mind and a little bit of say on what happens in their neighborhood. And I said that in the last, in the Planning Commission meeting. And I did also, I also asked the gentleman, that one of the owners and the speaker for them, where he lived. And he said he lived in Hot Springs. And I asked him if he would like to have this across the street from him. And it took him a little bit to answer, which is understandable. But he said he had a park across the street from him. Well, the park is a lot different than this. The park is managed by the city, controlled by the police department. And they had, and they do have something to say about a park. So that's my philosophy about this item.
Any other?
Mr. Chair? And from hearing everybody speak, pros and cons, these are good people trying to run a good business. I mean, you know, no one said anything bad about them. And no doubt, what they want to do would be probably good for their business and for tourism in general, except when you're talking about tourism in the middle or at least around a residential area, you have to sometimes compromise. I mean, you can't give everybody what they want. You can't give the residents everything they want. You can't give the tourism everything they want. So you have to compromise. And to me, the best way to do that is to maintain our conditional use permit. That gives us some say in what's going to go on there and put some conditions on it. The only thing I heard that they don't like the conditional use because it takes too much time. Well, it might. And sometimes, taking time to make decisions like this is the best thing you can do. So I guess I would rather see them just stay the way it is. They can always come to us with application for conditional use and give us a little more chance and give the neighbors a chance to discuss it and see what's going on.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to deny the rezon requested by this individual in Rushmore Cave.
Second? Do we have a motion and a second?
Mr. Chairman, it's just deny, not deny without prejudice?
Yes. And I can, I can follow up on that a little bit if you want to. During the Planning Commission meeting, it was flat turned down five to two. And that's a pretty good majority. Then they went to Dan, I believe, out in the audience, and said, apparently, they asked them to have it denied without prejudice. Well, there was a motion made to reconsider. I went along with reconsider. And it was voted then to deny without prejudice so they could bring it back within a year's time and not have to pay all of the fees and things again to approach the county for a rezon. But I don't think that's the answer. I think the answer is to maintain the conditional use permit situation on this property and give everybody a say in what happens.
No further comments? We have a motion and a second?
And a roll call, please.
And a roll call vote.
Buscud?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Holloway?
No.
Troutman?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Three to two.
Motion carried. Okay. Next, we have items from the chair. And Holly, were you, do we have someone here who's going to talk about the tax increment? The tax increment financing foundation, there's not a nonprofit foundation in the place connected with this. Holly and I discussed it. And the idea of this being on the agenda was to have a thorough and complete explanation of the tax increment financing process and the impacts thereof. And were you able to arrange that?
No. No, not at this time. You know, the city is getting ready to move forward with looking and reviewing and revising the TIFs. And they are so complicated to me, I can't get my brain wrapped around them. So in order for the county, I think it would be a good idea to have a foundation, like a comprehensive TIF 101 that is written by our Pennington County Auditor, who is responsible for the dissemination of the monies and how they are applied. Because there's, there seems to be a lot of differing opinions on how TIFs really are. And I think it would be helpful if we can, the board would ask Auditor Pearson to prepare a comprehensive TIF 101 to use for the commission to start going forward with that revision with the city.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I ask a couple of things if you're going to do this? One of the most confused parts of the TIF is that people have very different ideas of what part of the tax dollar the different entities, city, county, and school district can actually use when that TIF dollar is brought in to pay for the TIF. And I think we need a very good breakdown. If this dollar comes in as a TIF dollar, where does it go? I think that that is probably one of the biggest misunderstandings of, because people will say, "Well, the county still has their money." Or, "No, you get, it's only paid out in new growth." Or, "It's just new growth that pays it." And we need to have that clarified. And people will say, "Well, you read the law, and it says this." Well, it, what we need to say is, this buck comes in, and this is where it goes. And we also need to have a good understanding of what it really does as far as the amount of money it affects the county as. People think it doesn't really affect the county. When we take county tax money that we normally would get to pay those TIFs, they think it doesn't affect us. And we need to understand, over the years, and maybe just two, five years, just say, "Okay, this is what we had coming in, and this is how much the county got to use of those TIF dollars." Because until you present that to people, they don't really get it. And then I would hope that the news media would be there to explain that.
I think it would be good if we had a motion to request that. Is there anyone so inclined?
Did you have a?
I got a question, but I can wait till after we make the motion.
So I would make a motion that we, that we request a thorough report on the tax increment financing dollar and what it does to the county.
From the county auditor?
From the county auditor, yes.
We have a motion and a second? Commissioner Holloway?
When we get this report, will it show, will it show the date that the TIF went in, what specifically the TIF amount was, the dollar amount that was financed, and when that is anticipated to go off with a closing date on? And frankly, the other thing that would be interesting to have with that report, I think, is what did they actually do? Was it to put curb and gutter in? Was it to put waters, water lines in? Or was it to help develop a piece of property? Whatever the, whatever the information was. I mean, we've got a bunch of these TIFs out there. They've been in place for a number of years. And maybe the auditor's already got this in her office. It says, "Here's, here's the payments that are going into that, and here's when it's supposed to be paid off." But frankly, we as commissioners don't have any idea how much is out there and when the payoff is on it.
And there's another part to this. If we do not have the direct benefit as a county, and I know that that's always controversial, but if within the city limits, they're using the TIF to put in roads and all of the underground utilities, et cetera. You know, that it's been said, well, you recover your money when it goes back on the tax rolls. However, that time period where we didn't have access as a county to that, that funding coming in takes a very long time to recover. And we do not have a good handle on that. And so getting these kinds of pieces of financial information and the length of the TIF and what it was for and so on can help us figure that out and present that to the public to show that, yes, they say we recover that, but how long does it take the county to recover it? Because we have no other source of income.
The other thing that I think, hopefully, that maybe this will point out a little bit, because hopefully, we'll look at what the city's dollars is, amounts for the city dollars too. But a lot of the people on the city council that are voting for these TIFs don't have any idea. They don't know any more about it than we do.
No.
Okay. We'll have a vote on this, and then I have some, a couple of comments. Go ahead.
You're going to have comments after the fact about this item?
Well, go ahead and make.
I just wanted, just wanted to bring up the situation. I brought it up a while back, and we talked about it. And that's the, and I'm going to stand thoroughly corrected if I'm wrong. And that's, we really don't know. But it's my understanding that this property is not supposed to, or these properties are not supposed to have TIFs or TIBs or anything else put on them unless they're blighted areas. And you can't tell me that the parking lot across the street from the Alex Johnson and Tally's Restaurant is a blighted area. So how can they use that money for the TIFs and other things if it's, it doesn't meet federal government specifications? So I guess that's another thing we need to know.
I can probably answer that. I think a couple of years ago, they changed the law. And now it's, or blighted areas or for economic development.
Well, and that's the case. I said I'd stand thoroughly corrected if I'm wrong. But that's what it used to be, so.
I could be corrected too, but I think that's exactly what happened.
Okay. We have a motion and a second? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Ours? Motion carried. Just a comment, in addition to that, Commissioner Buscud and I are on the TIF committee with the city. And the process they're going through right now is to amend the procedure. We have copies of that and the suggested procedure. The meetings are not regular by any means, and I don't even know when the next one will be. But my impression of what I've read so far in the proposed changes doesn't go far enough. The way I see the process, if you at first do not succeed with your TIF application, there's about three other avenues you can pursue. And it politicizes the whole process instead of making it a, an objective evaluation of, "Does it fit the parameters or not?" So there will perhaps be some arguments when and if we meet. Item B has an asterisk.
There's an asterisk because a few hours after I published the agenda, I got an email from?
NACO.
NACO, in regards to the current status of PILT funding with the federal government. And so I wanted to put it on there in the event that the board wanted to take additional action. I did go back and look at minutes. And we sent our legislators a letter back on November 19th confirming our position that they need to find a long-term funding solution for PILT dollars. So at this time, we could, you could direct me to send another one. Or if Commissioner Peterson, you had talked about PILT at the last commission meeting, if you wanted to give some more updates or... I just wanted to make sure that you are aware that we received a request to contact our legislators again.
The, in the packet relative to this, there is a draft letter. And certainly, the people in, at NACO, which is the National Association of County Commissions, have contacted all the counties where lots of public land exists. And it won't happen unless we push on it. So I would recommend that we authorize a letter to be sent.
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion that... Mr. Chair, I would make the motion that, um, on behalf of the Commission, you would write a letter, maybe this verbiage or whatever you deem appropriate, and, um, that we urge our congressional delegation to push to get PILT into the farm bill, and that you could have fixed your signature on that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item, I was visiting with Holly a while back, and I said, um, I think it would be useful if the Commission had sort of a sense of what's laying ahead of us in the year. And so, we have a memorandum. Would you discuss that, please, Holly?
Most certainly. Um, 2014 is set to be an exciting and busy year for Pennington County. First and foremost, the biggest project probably is the completion of the new administration building and moving county offices over to that. Looking August, September, approximately around that timeframe. So, we'll be busy planning and preparing for that. To start with the year, though, um, the ag classification bill is, is going through legislature, um, so that'll keep us busy from January through March. Dispatch has a radio upgrade occurring in February with their merge with the state dispatch system. That, that approximate merger date is yet to be determined, but LeAnn wanted it noted with her radio upgrade. Um, April, we'll have Board of Equalization hearings, as we always do. June...
Do we have specific dates on the motion?
Equalization hearing, sir. Uh, you have to meet the first Tuesday in April by statute, and then we have the flexibility to schedule. It's looking like it's the third week in April right now. But those dates have not been set yet.
We can get those set sooner rather than later.
Okay. Uh, June, we're gonna start budget hearings, as we always do. We'll have two full dates of hearings in there. Auditor's office with the primary election this year, they're might be ready to go to use the new electronic poll books, but they'll definitely be using them in the general election in November. Go live with Springbrot Payroll, that's gonna affect all county employees, so that's a pretty big, um, new implementation for us. Again, new administration building. Uh, for Commission also, we just talked about the revision of the tax increment financing process. State's Attorney's Office is going live with a new Zirker software, which is a pretty big deal for them. Health and Human Services relocation, um, again, to be determined on specific dates. Last Karen knew was possibly breaking ground in July and starting construction in September. Um, a lot of other initiatives, Karen's got some to address affordable housing. She also emailed me this morning about, um, they're still working on their goal of having a veterans court in Pennington County by 2016, so they're continuing to work on that. Um, and also, uh, from our last meeting, we talked about updating the county's comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance updates. So lots of things happening in Pennington County.
Any other thoughts on this in terms of, um, things we've, we've missed? On the comprehensive plan update, um, I went over to City Hall last Wednesday and sat in on another one of their briefings. And, uh, a contractor who was sitting in on that started asking some questions, and his question triggered a thought in my mind, and that was that, uh, the changes in classification or zoning or categories like highway service that were being proposed in the comprehensive plan, uh, I, I asked that if they had drawn up a list of the changes they were recommending. And, um, the contractor piped up, and he said, "That would be a good idea because people who may end up having their land changed in classification and never know it until they get ready to sell it," or whatever. And, um, so, my thought is that, especially in the three-mile area, the county would be, it would be important for the county to know whether or not any classifications had been changed or will be changed with the city's comprehensive plan action. So at some point, I don't know if we need a, a motion or whether we can just identify the, the interest in that and have Holly foster communication that would, uh, cause that to happen. What's your thought?
Mr. Chair, that was kind of my thought. I, I was concerned about those types of things when I read that, and, and I think that was really my reason for saying that we kinda need to be on the same page of what we're doing with the city and the county in that three-mile limit. And I, I would say that we should have, um, someone from Planning and Zoning who is, um, assigned to go to those meetings and to report back to us what those kinds of changes are. We, we really need to have a good handle on that because, um, as you can see today, we had, we have all kinds of those things that'll come up, and it'll just become much more complicated for landowners. And so, I, I would say that somebody from Planning and Zoning should be assigned to make sure that they're giving us the information, and that we know what's going on, and then we can direct them.
Okay, anything else? If not, we'll move on to committee reports. Commissioner Holloway?
I, I don't have any, um, I haven't had any committee meetings since our last meeting.
Okay. You have none? I would just report that I went to peer last Friday to the rail, railroad meeting that the Governor had called. Uh, it was a relatively closed meeting in the sense that it, it was not a large crowd. There were five or six shippers from West River at the meeting. And essentially, the purpose of the meeting was to update us on the status of the two actions that are being taken. One is challenging Canadian Pacific on whether they did or didn't live up to their promises. And the other is the process of examining the credentials and intentions of the proposed new buyer. And, um, the Governor wasn't looking for any big press releases or anything, uh, just communication. And indications are that the representatives of the proposed buyer are, they're making contact with shippers. Shipper's reactions at this point are positive. And, and the Governor laid out the timetable. And so, that was it. Commissioner Davis, you have any?
Um, I had a Fair Board meeting, uh, last night. They're starting to look for some new directors on there. And also, the Stock Show is coming up. Uh, I'd like to make sure that all the commissioners come to the Stock Show and, and see how they have things. Don't stop into the main office downstairs and find out what you can do, if anything, to, to help them out. Uh, the Johnson Siding Community Center, I'm sure that all of you know, collapsed during the storm. Uh, all it has left is a wall standing, the ceiling, and everything is laying on the cement floor and, and the inside. They've since cleaned it out pretty well, but the four sides are standing there, and they're waiting for their insurance company and things to get everything taken care of. Uh, they're gonna take the rest of the other, the three, the two side walls and the back wall down and leave the front wall. Now, you've been by there, not anybody recently, but they've put up a real nice log front, wood front onto the community center. They're gonna keep that and put it into the new building. Uh, they're gonna be asking us for some help in planning and zoning and different things. So, that's coming up shortly. It's about it.
Mr. Buschgrude?
I went to peer last Wednesday for, uh, the, the Association Board of Directors hosted the two committees, the Senate and the House Committee and local government, and, for a lunch, uh, over at, at the Association's new building. It was about, oh, probably 25 to 28 legislators there who really seemed to enjoy it. They thanked us profusely. That was much better than doing other things that the Association's done in the past, uh, like they've had dinners at night or sometimes ice cream. But, uh, nothing seemed to work out. This seemed to work out really good if you can find the right time and, where they're not in, uh, session or in caucus. So it's, it's tough to find the right time. But, uh, and the other plus was this cost about $375 as opposed to about $3,500 to have a dinner at the Ramco. So, we saved some money. And they seemed to enjoy it, and got into a little bit of discussion about some bills that are coming up, and so they, uh, it worked out very well.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I did have one other thing I probably should mention, um, and I talked to Nancy about this before the meeting started. Uh, at the Fair Board meeting last night, I asked the Fair Board members to keep track of our ag bill that's going to be coming up in the legislature. And some of them tried to come down and testify in favor of helping us put that bill together. And they, some of them said they would try and do that, and Ron said that he would keep track of when the bill comes up and let the Board know.
Good. If there's no further committee reports, um, we'll move to items from the public. Does anyone wish to address the Commission?
My name is George Farabee, and I've got a couple of quick items. Rapid City Journal, spending complaint, waste of time. Well, I want to salute, or my hat's off to Don Holloway for, quote, "Just because the federal government wants to throw away money like that, I don't think we should participate in it." If a lot more people had have spoken up over the last 20, 30 years, we probably wouldn't be 18, approaching $18 trillion in debt in this nation. My hat's off to you, Dan. Don, excuse me. If this is, you know, Rapid City Journal, a conservative, supposedly conservative paper, you wonder what's happening across the rest of the nation. Along those same lines of spending, uh, we, so far, county has written checks to respec consulting for $793,698.28. That may be coming to an end, Spring Creek. The board, Water Board, Water Natural Resources Board met. The State Water Board and Natural Resources Board met, uh, early in December, and what you have in front of you is the funding recommendations. Sorry, I don't have copies for everybody else. The task force that met the month before, the 319 non-farm source, task force recommended zero funding from EPA for 2014. The column over on the right where it says BWNR, that's the Board of Water Natural Resources, their numbers aren't there. Obviously, they haven't, uh, updated this sheet yet, but if you look on the bottom, it says Spring Creek Watershed Segment II Amendment. We requested, when I say "we," Pennington County requested $348,000. DNR recommended zero. 319 recommended zero, the 319 task force. And the Water Board recommended zero. So maybe, maybe we're making some, some inroads. And along those lines, Spring Creek, back in December, the Hill City Prevailor reported, wrote an article, front page, county addresses. Let me back up to the, any questions on that handout? Sorry about that. And I guess I should point out on that handout, I also highlighted in yellow the $600,000. That's what we're paying bureaucrats to administer to the 319 program in the state of South Dakota. PGR Corporation Company, $600,000. And I know the scheme of things is that small, but you add it all up, that's why we're at $18 trillion. Back to the Hill City Paper, and I'll leave it with this. County Addresses Spring Creek article, and, uh, I've looked at the recordings over and over, and I can't find any place where you, the Board, gave one of the Commissioners, the Commissioner from District 1, the authority to speak on your behalf. County Addresses Spring Creek article. And then, I'd like to know from the Board, do any of you have permission to speak for the Board without express approval? The article obviously is an air, and, and I intend to respond to it. I was hoping the Prevailer would respond. I'll just leave it at this. When I spoke to Hill City Council, I merely reported, I merely reported what the Spring Creek Advisor Group did. I did not represent them. Did not represent them. I represented what I observed at that meeting. There's a big difference in the choice of words. And I guess one other thing, I, Don Holloway, I hear two, three meetings ago, you, uh, I guess the first time I heard, uh, what some people would say is a vulgarity in the room, and, and, but I got it, that communicated to us in the audience. Uh, and we are so afraid to communicate. I learned a long, long time ago that the reason for words is so that we communicate. And, and Don, you communicated to us. Couple of years ago, one of the Commissioners used the phrase "rectal problem," and, and I don't know what that means. Thank you.
Any further items from the public? If not, um, unless something has changed, we have no need for an executive session?
Yes, we do, sir.
Oh, we do? Okay. It has changed. So, we need a motion.
Motion to go into executive session. Someplace.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.